We're running because we didn't get the miss. I'm gonna call the regular session. Springfield, any other part session to work with roll call?
Sorry, Mayor Van Gordon, Councilor Weber, here, Councilor Mott, Councilor Rodley, here, Councilor Doyle, here, and Councilor Pishanary.
Yes, thank you. Right, we have two items for the work session tonight, the first is the interim board for council interviews and deliberation and appointment.
Great, thank you, thank you, Mayor and Council. We have kind of an exciting night tonight, so the council's gonna conduct interviews during the work session. And if time allows, start the deliberations, and then you can resume deliberation during the regular meeting. I'm gonna be facilitating tonight, and just a quick note, we'll be to Mayor Bridget Smith for getting us to this point. We have three candidates for your interviews, all three candidates are here. I will go out and bring in each candidate one at a time for you to do your interviews. The way they're set up currently is CJ Mann will be your first interview, Beth Blackwell will be your second, and then June Father Gill will be your third interview. You have assessment forms, you should have assessment forms in front of you, and each question is labeled with your name, the question that you're asked. And then unless you have any questions, we can get rolling, so you can never ask your questions.
Are there any process questions? When they sit, I will welcome them, and then I will turn it over to Michelle for the first question.
Great, so I will go get CJ Mann, they will have a copy of the questions here.
CJ, Beth, then June.
Are we just introducing ourselves when we ask our question? Okay, that's what we said.
Joe, Steve, that's four, I think it's four. Oh, gotcha, I see it now, I do that, makes sense. And everybody saw that it was board order? Yes, I guess, we had some present interview, like, one night of like three hours.
Forty-seven interviewed in one night.
It was fifty-seven. CJ.
Hello, CJ.
Hi, I'm Dawn.
Good, how are you?
Hanging in there.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
The plan is we're gonna go around and ask a couple of questions, I'm Sean, by the way. And then more introduce themselves as they go, and we've got about ten, maybe twelve minutes for this interview, so.
Ooh, I'll have to talk fast, I was a little wordy.
That's perfect. All right, and I'm wordy.
Michelle, ready?
Hi CJ, I am Michelle Weber, counselor for Ward One, and I get to answer the first question, so. Question number one, what do you like best about Springfield and why?
I have never written that because my nerves just get me so much. I like that we try and not distinguish ourselves as Eugene. And I want to continue to live in a community that is welcoming to all. I appreciate the efforts that have been made to frame our future in a way that shows we understand and care about the needs of a variety of cultures and communities that now live, work, and play in our town. I have seen improvements in these relationships and will wholeheartedly support the continued efforts at inclusion, equity, and diversity. I want to provide services that make people feel safe in their homes, their neighborhoods, and their town.
Number two, the city council. This is my question, if there's some things in Springfield you're permitted to do, whether it be to add, eliminate, or change anything, what would those be?
I would like to add, I would love to see the types of services that Cahuhtz provides expanded to include more mental health modalities, increase their presence among the unhoused, and to increase the number of personnel and vehicles in the program. Change, I will work to change how we see homelessness. With the pending changes to the camping ordinance and the general public's perception that the need for temporary shelters are only for the visibly unhoused living on the streets, it is time to invest in their needs, but also in the needs of other types of unhoused people. There are thousands of families that are doubling and even tripling up, pushing the boundaries of occupancy standards as a way to keep their loved ones off the street. Though I am personally supportive of multi-generational living situations, this arrangement can be taxing. There are thousands of families stuck in toxic and abusive situations where the lack of affordable housing is a barrier to their escape. Investigate, I would be interested in having conversations with partners and exploring other policing models, adding more traffic patrols and a variety of types of community policing.
Okay, I'm Corey Rodley, Ward Three. Okay, councilors are elected citywide rather than by ward, what advantages and/or disadvantages do you see with that process?
I see that this is still a topic of conversation when I ran against Dave Ralston in 2012, it was one of the backburner issues facing the council even then. I've lived in the board for over thirty years, I know my neighbors. I raised a family with grandchildren included at Maple, Springfield Middle, and Springfield High. My mechanic of twenty-five years and my insurance broker of thirty years are only a mile from my house. My park, pool, and recreational facilities are all within three miles of my house. I love that I am local and that I spend my time and money in the neighborhood I love. Granted, we all have things in common, and I trust that we all care about streets, sidewalks, sewers, storm drains, speed limits, and safety. I got stuck in the letter S. I guess all of our wards have an aspect of uniqueness and our neighbors have specific concerns. My ward is a mixture of commercial, industrial, retail, and residential. Major highways with exits up Mohawk and Forty-Second and Main Street cuts through our residential sectors, adding to the challenges we face in trying to stay friendly. I've lived in Ward One, possibly Ward Two, Three, and Five as well, to bridge up the two boundaries. And I can see that those experiences will help me understand citywide issues.
I'm Victoria Doyle, I'm one of the new councilors, I represent Ward Five. And my question for you, I got a tough, a long one.
You did.
Since there are six city council positions, what do you believe are the advantages and disadvantage of collective decision-making and shared leadership?
A city council survives and thrives on collaboration, cooperation, and community partnerships. Having to balance varying opinions, diverse concerns, and mutual interests help us make the hard choices in policies. Once those difficult conversations are had and the decisions are made, we are one voice. Representing the city council to the public as a unified front allows our neighbors to believe we have made decisions that benefited as many people as we could while not harming the minority. The job as a public figure is dicey at best, and having others in the same boat helps us with the day-to-day task of serving on the council. Interpreting the public's opinions and concerns is challenging, sticky, and uneasy, but sharing those thoughts and feelings with each other will improve our working relationship and overall goals of making policy decisions that affect our neighbors.
Hello.
Hello.
Joe Pishanary, Ward Six.
Yep.
So when you're faced with a complex problem with multiple solutions, what process would you use to select the best solution to your problems?
I am a firm believer in collaborative processes that result in the best-case scenario solution. Once mutual interest can be identified, processes that allow the councilors to come up with multiple solutions, the development of objective criteria that help us judge those options as to which solution will meet the needs and interests of all parties, and to keep the public interest in the forefront is preferable to me. I believe that the efforts to get public input is critical in the overall success of the decisions we will make, decisions that are reasonable and durable. Strong communication is necessary to understand that everyone's interests should be expressed and understood. In order for the council to speak as one voice, I feel that the decision-making that can be supported by all parties makes our decisions more acceptable to the public interest.
Do you mind repeating the first part where you said collaborative processes, it was like the first line, I was trying to write it down.
Oh, no problem, I could leave this with you as well.
Okay, yeah, either way.
But I will repeat myself.
Just the first line of collaborative.
Collaborative processes that result in the best-case scenario solution.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, I got a relaxed couple of questions. Can you describe your understanding of the relationship between the council, the city manager, and the staff?
That's what I had to win because I'm not a city councillor yet. Based on my limited interactions with the council, I assume that the council makes policy decisions, sets goals for the city government that meets the needs of the community, establishes priorities, creates vision statements, authorizes contracts, passes resolutions, and improves the annual budget. It appears that we also work on land use issues, city services, and community concerns. The city manager, I believe, and I hope I'm not insulting anyone, is a higher professional position. I believe this person is either appointed or hired by the council, acts as the chief advisor, and helps provide essential information necessary to help the council with their decision-making processes. City staff are called upon to provide the documents regarding the agenda items so that all the facts and figures can be understandable in helping the council make informed decisions. It appears that the six councilors, the mayor, the manager, and the city attorney, along with key staff personnel, all work together to set policies that meet the law, the goals, and are within the taxing authority.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to my bonus question.
Yeah, CJ question, I watched the video.
Oh, I would have said so, I was assuming so. My understanding is you're currently running for the Willamette Lane Board.
That is correct.
In this situation that we chose to appoint you, and what would your, what would your plans for the future be?
That's how I read the question, can I read my answer?
No, go ahead.
How about if you just do, what you, what do you think, what comes out of your mind?
So, I understand there's concerns that I am on the ballot. Both of these things kind of happened almost simultaneously, that's why I have to write it down. I had originally planned to serve the patrons of the Willamette Lane Park and Recreation District. When Denise resigned her seat, I was approached to put my name forward as the replacement director. I was one of fourteen very qualified individuals, and the board chose Dr. Johnny Lake to serve, to serve out Denise's term. Those same people that asked me to serve on the board encouraged me to put my name on the ballot. Within the same timeframe, Leonard took the job out of state, by the way, you said it's a loan, which led to this vacancy, he is one of many people who asked me to seek this position on the city council. I think that if I'm lucky enough to be appointed tonight to the city council and elected in May to the Willamette Lane Board, I am sure that conversations and legal advice will be sought. I do not believe that I have created a conflict of interest in wanting to add my skills and talents to both governing bodies, but since I'm not a lawyer, I can assume that the city attorney will provide legal advice on this matter, and then we can go from there.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
The last question was, do you have any questions for us, or is there something you'd like us to know that wasn't addressed in the questions?
Just that I am probably one of the nicest people you will ever meet. I'm genuinely caring, compassionate, I've worked in social services for the last forty years. I'm retired, I have time, I love to read, because I saw three hundred pages last night, I was like, woo. But, and I'm also fun. So, I hope that helps.
Perfect, thank you so much for coming in.
Do you want me to leave any of this?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
She's been sort of, Denise's been vacated, she named.
The Dr. Lake was appointed.
I was feeling like it was gonna be an explanation because I'm not getting a chance to write stuff down.
Okay. Ward, Ward.
What?
Ward. We.
shorthand, shorthand.
We will take half a breath.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking.
By the time we get through three of these, we'll be professionals.
I thought you mentioned somebody that recommended her.
Hey, I heard she says. Here in council, this is Beth Blackwell. Well, welcome, more glad you could join us this evening. The plan is we each have an assigned question, and then we'll, as people ask their individual questions, they'll go ahead and introduce themselves. So I'm gonna turn it over to Michelle to ask the first question.
Michelle Weber, also for Ward One. And I get the first question as mentioned, so what do you like best about Springfield and why?
Okay, well, there's a lot that I love about Springfield, and I would have to say that it's probably the people. I've lived in Springfield basically my entire life. My parents still live in the same house in Thurston that they brought me home from the hospital to. I graduated from Thurston High School. My youngest child is getting ready to graduate from Thurston High School in a couple of months. And my husband graduated from Springfield, he currently works for Springfield School District, so I feel like I have deep roots here, and really well-connected and networked to the people here. And I love going to the grocery store and at the local restaurants and seeing people that I know. I think Springfield has a lot of pride in their town and community, and I love being a part of it.
Thank you.
Question number two, Steve Ward Two. If there were some things that Springfield permitted to do, whether it be to add, eliminate, or change anything, what would those be?
I would have to say I would love to see more opportunities for housing, opportunities for buyers, for Springfield buyers, homebuyers, on all levels. I think there's, as we know, there's such a shortage of housing out there on every level. I would love to see more opportunities for first-time homebuyers in our area. I don't see a lot of housing, I've been in real estate for sixteen years, and there's such a shortage of housing for our first-time homebuyers and entry-level buyers that there's many buyers that want Springfield, and that's great to see, that's changed over the years. And I love seeing that so many people are asking for Springfield and wanting to live here, wanting to put their roots down in Springfield, and we don't have a lot of supply for that entry-level buyer. Seeing what's going on over in Marco La Meadows is exciting. That growth in that building is super exciting to see that. Those are larger homes, though, and that price point is mid-fours and up, and that first-time homebuyer or that single-income family, that's a little high price for them, so seeing something that would fit maybe a lower income level. Again, the first-time homebuyer or condominiums would be amazing, Springfield doesn't really have any condominiums. So seeing something that would fit that need would be exciting.
Thank you, I'm Corey Rodley, Ward Three. Councilors are elected citywide rather than by ward. What advantages and or disadvantages do you see with that process?
I think any kind of voting platform you can pick apart and find disadvantages to. However, I think that if you have a representative from each ward, then that gives eyes and ears and and a voice to a neighborhood that you're familiar with and you live in and you drive those streets each day and have a community within a community. And I think that's important to have a voice and to have representation for your neighborhood. And then it's also important, though, since the council is making decisions that affect the entire city, it's very important that the city gets to vote and elect every position that's seated in the council because you're making decisions that affect everyone within the city.
Thank you. I've been told I need to do shorthand, I'm trying. Then I can't read my handwriting, is what happens, I get to the end, and then I'm like, what would I say? Hi, I'm Victoria Doyle, representing Ward Five. Since there are six city council positions, what do you believe are the advantages and disadvantages of collective decision-making and shared leadership?
Well, I'm a big believer in teamwork makes the dream work, for sure, I think that teamwork and collective decision-making eliminates the singular, you know, process and a singular objective, I guess. And you, when you have, you know, six minds are better than one. Six people bringing a different lens and a different perspective to every issue. Everyone comes from different backgrounds, different ideas, different, they bring something different to the table, different ways of problem-solving, and that's important when you're looking at complex problems. And you each, I guess, represent, you know, a different area of town, and you're bringing a different perspective into that, I think that's important, that you come together as a team and make, these are big decisions that you're making as a team.
From that, I'm Joe, I have Ward Six. So, when faced with a complex problem with multiple solutions, what process would you use to select the best solution for?
I think identifying exactly what the problem is is important. And then looking at the different solutions and what the ramifications are for those solutions would be important. Weighing those solutions against each other. Again, talking collectively, if we're, if this question is relaying, how would it be in a council setting? Would be discussing it with the team, with the members of council as a group. This question reminds me of what you guys are looking at right now with the camping ordinance, it's a very complex problem. And there's multiple solutions, none of which are easy, and there's ramifications to every solution. And going out to the public and asking their opinion, I think is really smart. And asking how they feel and how businesses feel and getting their input on it. And then coming together as a, as a collective to make the best decision that you can with the information at hand for the community as a whole.
Thank you. So can you describe your understanding of the relationship between the council, city manager, and the staff?
So my understanding is that the council works as the legislative branch of the government for the city, and that they hire the city manager, and the city manager works for the council, and that the staff works for the city manager.
Okay, that's the easiest way to put it, okay.
Question on that, sorry.
Okay, do you have any questions for us, or is there something you would like to know that wasn't addressed in the questions? You would like us to know that wasn't addressed in the questions?
I think I have any questions at this point, but I would like to say thank you to all of you very much. I have reached out independently to each of you when I was thinking about applying so that I could ask questions about, you know, your experience in your time, the time involved in becoming a councillor, and what that looks like, because it's a big job, and I've, I've learned it's quite a big job and a lot of time and a big-time commitment. So I just want you to know that it's not a decision that I've, to apply, that I've taken lightly. I feel like I've done my homework, I feel green to the city council, but I'm ready and I'm willing to learn and jump in hundred percent, hundred and ten percent, give my all to the city, to the city I love, the city I've lived in basically my entire life, and to the people of Springfield. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for reaching out. You didn't breathe. I can breathe. It's nerve-wracking. I'm really good.
So, whereas I could use call video.
Interviewing is so stressful for people.
I know.
Yeah, I know. Nice, it's okay.
Our council, this is June Father Gill.
Hello.
Hi, June.
Hi.
Thanks for coming in.
Welcome.
We're gonna rotate the different questions, and each person's got a single question, and you know pretty much everybody here, so it's less important about the introductions. I'm gonna turn it over to Michelle for the first question.
Okay. June, I don't know. What do you like best about Springfield and why?
Okay, well, I like it because it's large enough to have some ethnic and social diversity and small enough that you can get to know one another. And I also like access to the river and the trees and the falls. That's almost fun.
Steve Ward Two. If there were some changes in Springfield you're permitted to do, whether it be to add, eliminate, or change anything, what would those be?
This is where I have a longer list. Okay, so as you probably are aware, I would like to have more low-income housing, like Ansar and other low-income housing, and also I think it's important to have some kind of day center and permanent Egan site serving unhoused individuals and for opportunities to get navigation to services, and also to participate in the community and share their gifts, and a lot of people out there that have gifts of music and art and all kinds of things. I also think it's very important to continue to work on diversity, equity, and inclusion, I think one of the goals up there says that. But that's hard work and has to do with encountering and being aware of racism and dealing with it. And I'd hate to say this, especially important in our police system, to have that dealt with and continuing to monitor and work on. I'd like to see some economic development, and I mean, I see economic development, but that supports grassroots, small businesses and cooperatives, and opportunities, this is just kind of an idea, for youth to serve on council, maybe not as voters, but to serve with the council. I'd like to see the land acknowledgement, that I think you probably have somewhere around, that is not just a land acknowledgement about a tribe in words, but maybe a way to build relationships with the tribe, tribes in the area, and native peoples in the area, and be intentional about doing that and have, listening to their ideas and their contributions. And finally, I'd like to see addiction and mental health services available as part of the continuum of care for anyone that needs them. I think we have a lot of work to do on that, but there's some possible ways to make that happen.
Thank you. Corey Rodley. Okay, councilors are elected citywide rather than by ward. What advantages and or disadvantages do you see with that process? What advantages and disadvantages do you see with that process?
Well, I see that the process allows for representation across the city. But because councillors are elected citywide, we need, they need to pay attention to the needs of the whole city. Not just their ward, which is a good thing. But the disadvantage is that sometimes the special needs and circumstances of the ward itself may not always be investigated or. Thank you.
Can you repeat that last part?
But this disadvantage is that sometimes when you're looking at the whole city, you're not paying attention to what the need is in your particular ward. And there may be things you're not seeing because you're not, you're looking at the forest and you miss some of the trouble with the trees. The, this came to mind to me from a person in Ward Four who was asking me, you know, what's your vision for Ward Four? Oh.
Hello. Victoria. Victoria Doyle, Ward Five, Representative. Your next door neighbor. Since there are six city council positions, what do you believe are the advantages and then disadvantage of collective decision making and shared leadership?
Well, I do believe that shared leadership is good because we need a variety of perspectives at the table to get the wisest results. And I think especially true if we have more, the more ethnic and cultural diversity, we have better for that. Allows us to be more creative. The disadvantage is that it's hard work. Because we have to take the time to really listen to one another.
So we'll go to Ward Six. Based with a complex problem with multiple solutions, what process would you use to select the best solution for those problems?
That's a good question. I think one of the things I would do is look for the best data available about the problem. And then get input and listen to the folks who are most affected by the problem or the situation or the issue, especially those that are historically disadvantaged or hurt in some way by the, by the issue. And in doing that, I suspect come up with a variety of solutions, possible solutions. And this means acknowledging also people's emotions and listening for needs. Because sometimes people get emotional about problems and we listen for what they're needing out of that. Then I would assess the resources available to address the needs and the solutions and try to work out which one would be most beneficial to those who are most affected. Or in the situation, the largest number of people. And I tend to not think in either or categories. I tend to think that there are more than one, as you said, solution. And as we collaborate and get various ideas, we can come up with things that will meet the needs of most people.
Can you describe your understanding of the relationship between the council, city manager, and staff?
Okay, I looked it up, looked it up online. Apparently, the mayor and the city council are the legislative branch. We're in charge of, or the council's in charge of making regarding ordinances and resolutions and contracts. Setting the goals for the city, adopting the city's budget. And then the city manager is like the executive person to help put those goals into action. And the city council also appoints or hires the the city manager. And the city manager also helps us understand the staff and what the staff are capable of doing and are doing. So there's a, should be communication back and forth. And the city manager oversees the administration of all the staff. And I noticed that, you know, the staff comes and brings, I'm sure the city manager helps decide which staff's gonna bring what. But they bring things to us and we listen to them and give them feedback or the council listens and gives feedback. So that there's communication between the people trying to implement things and us that are trying to set the goal.
Right. Do you have any questions for us or something you'd like us to know that wasn't addressed in the questions?
I recognize that the commitment to be on council involves every Monday evening, that's fairly clear. And the time needed to read through all the documents. Is there other time commitment required? Gosh, yes.
That's a drop in the bucket.
Required or?
Drop in the bucket you just talked about.
So I will, I guess I will start and then I will open it up and let people that it can be as much or as little as what you want to be, the part that you have to do if you have to show up every single Monday night for city council. You know, most people have anywhere between four to seven other committee assignments that they're going to and almost other, you know, additional daily meetings as well as community events. Follow-up phone calls with constituents, emails and, you know, check-ins with staff over different projects that they're working on. So like it could range, you know, anywhere between, you know, a 10-hour to even a 20-hour commitment a week. Yeah, yeah. Does anybody else want to add anything?
Did you include evening times?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I would just, I think you're right. I think it, it works for me. It tends to be about 15 to 20 hours maybe a week does council work. Because in addition to reading the packet and doing the Monday stuff, there are a lot of ways to contribute depending on what committees and boards and things that you're on. But also, you know, there's the, there's the conversations and stuff with constituents, but there's also sometimes like city things that happen during off hours. So it's not, it's not a, it's not a nine to five or.
Every time they go to something, Curry's already there.
It's good for the, especially in your ward, but around the city, but they have a ribbon cutting or something going on. We're not required to go to those, but it really means a lot to the people for us to show up. I think it shows that we, you know, that we care about their business or we care about what's going on with them. And so a lot of times most of us will show up at different events like that that we're invited to just because it means a lot to people for us as their representatives to be there.
All right. I was wondering, is there a need to be, if there is a need to be absentee, say I have surgery. How is that handled?
Usually you just inform either me or Joe and we just account for it. Is, is sometimes we can still operate with only four councillors here, that's the quorum. So is people either take vacation or, you know, have other things come up, you know, we sort of just count noses to make sure we have enough people here to keep operating. Every once in a while, maybe we'll have to get rescheduled, but.
Zoom, we have the option of Zoom. I was not feeling well last week and so I still came to the meeting. I just stayed home because I didn't want to get anybody else sick, so.
And we appreciate that. So we work through it. It just takes a lot of communication.
And is there any orientation or training provided?
Yes. The city manager will take care of that piece.
Yes, she told me she might.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
All right. We still have a little bit of time and I'm gonna see if you guys want to start in deliberations now or we can go on to the next item. Do you guys want some time to think about it? Are you ready to make, make some comments? Okay. Anybody wanna jump in first?
Be mayor before you. Sorry. I do have just a written copy of the memo about CJ Mann and being on both. I don't know if anybody wanted a hard copy in addition to the email today. You want, anybody?
I would like that. I'll just pass.
Maybe we should take. Maybe we should take.
It isn't gonna change type. Okay. Well, anyway. Okay.
And then we can talk about this more in the regular session, but there are voting. Since there are so few candidates, most likely you don't need to do the straw man, that option B, you could just do the option A, which would be name the, you know, Neil will call out your name, then you could name the person that you would select. And you can keep voting till you get to that number of whoever has the majority votes or how many it takes. Anyway, if you have any other questions about voting, I'm here.
Right on. Thanks, Mary.
All right.
I don't, I would, I don't care necessarily would like to.
Mr. President.
Everybody's jumping in into a line here.
Wow, I don't have any problem discussing. I, I think all of them had some very decent, very good questions, great, good answers and thought out. Most of them were all very thorough. What stood out to me is my number one pick would be Beth. Because of how she answered and how, the breadth of which her consideration was when she answered those questions. And she looked at, seems, appears to me that she was looking at her decision-making ability and being involved from a 30,000-foot view, which is where councillors should be sitting at as opposed to tiny, small bits of things. I really liked her passion for the housing situation, looking for, trying to make sure we have some houses for first-time buyers. To me, that's very, very important. I like that. I really like her teamwork makes it ring more just, that cliche, but it's cool. I like that. And I liked her problem solving. First you have to identify if you have a problem and that was something that no one else said is like, you may perceive something as a problem, but is it really a problem and identify what is the problem? She quickly identified the camping ordinance as being very simple as an example, they're very difficult decisions, so like that. CJ was, she was, she answered the questions that, that not. We know it's one of them that, like there's what advantages, disadvantages. The question number three is that I heard a lot as far as what she was talking about her ward. Everything about her ward went up, never really answered what's, what's the advantage and disadvantage? So that was kind of a. Collaborative process leaning on everything as being collaborative and sometimes collaborative. You want to get there, but to me, you have to also be able to stand behind what your decision is or what you believe to be the correct decision and standing behind it as opposed to always searching for the, let's make everybody happy. It's something where it'd be great, but that's not always gonna be happen, that's not always gonna happen. That's not set well with her. And then with June. For me, she's, she's way more into the social system, which I agree, I understand, but I don't think she has a very healthy graph of where the city stands versus what the county duties are and county responsibilities. And I think that's basically a struggle. So anyway, so for me, it's Beth, CJ, and June in that order.
Just start going down.
So my number one choice is CJ. And the, I might not say as much, but I think that she brings a lot of diverse experience and has been, you know, lived throughout Springfield, lives in the ward, has shown that she was very interesting. She ran for this office before and continues to be really interested in serving the community of Springfield. I think that even though, and I agree with you in terms of how she answered that question, but I also really appreciated that she kind of talked about in sort of detail, like why it's important for people to have a representative in their ward and to know the people that live there and to understand the needs of that in addition to being citywide. And I think that, I think that she kind of brings this understanding that, that yes, we're talking about big things like the camping ordinance and homelessness, but we're also talking about parks and roads and streets. And I mean, she was the one of the candidates who talked about some of those infrastructure things that we all spend so much time on and land use and things like that. So, and I think that she just sort of has a good understanding of what it is that where this particular council has come or where they're going. So she was my number one choice. Beth is my second choice. I thought, sort of unlike you, I mean, I also care strongly about affordable housing, but that was the one thing. And the fact that, you know, she is coming from a real estate background and the housing is like, I wanted like to see like more. Like I want to see that there were more things besides just like real estate and housing. But also appreciate that she has lived here forever and and has really, you know, loves the city and her family lives here and all of that. And I actually, I think that while June brings a lot of great things, also I actually agree with you in terms of like the human services pieces that are county pieces. And it'd be really tough for us to sort of keep in mind what's the role of the city and what's the role of a county. But I do also think that she, you know, she brings a love for the city and has been very, cares about the future, so. So those are my one, twos, and threes.
Okay, Beth is my number one. Well aware of the housing and homeless issues. And the big deal for us now. And then CJ, very outstanding. I'm very surprised with her presentation. And she's running for Willamaleine. I suspect she's gonna be elected to that. I mean, I'd like to see those talents go to her efforts of Willamaleine for now. And then later on, maybe come back to council. But by the way, these are all excellent. And June, this doesn't have the experience yet.
Beth is my number one choice for all of the reasons that have already been shared, so I don't need to regurgitate those. But in addition to that, I understand having all of your notes right in front of you and wanting to have that comfort of those notes, but I really appreciated that Beth was there, nerves up front and just embracing that discomfort, which we face when we're sitting here having these conversations and making these decisions. I think that that to me was an important component. So second, I would agree CJ would be my second choice, but I also do would like to see her efforts in the Willamaleine arena for now, given that she's looking at both options. Having been there or looking at two options simultaneously, I get that, right? It's kind of a race to the finish line. But I would like to see her, if, I would like to see this person just focusing on one big learning experience at a time. And obviously that would make June my third choice.
Victoria.
So I will say that CJ had me right off the bat when she said, well, you like that's about Springfield and she said that we're not Eugene. I thought that was pretty cool. I was like, bingo, right? That was really great. But I, I think the consensus for me is also Beth and I feel the same about the notes. I think that that is a perfect way to explain it, that, you know, you can have everything written down, but it's really important that people are able to have stuff that they've thought about and that they've read about and then be able to articulate that because that's what we do, right? We don't necessarily always come in with notes. I was a one-trick pony in a sense that my experience is, is land use and infrastructure and public works. And so I believe that I had the capacity to learn those other things that we touch on and I firmly believe that Beth would be able to do that as well. So my choices for Beth, CJ, and June.
So if you're keeping track, I've got four for Beth. So she's got, well, when, when we vote in there, it sounds like she's gonna be the Ward Four councillor. I thought all three of them were absolutely fantastic. They, they surprised me. I think folks articulated some different concerns with some, you know, different people. And I think, you know, if, when, when we talk, you know, when with, with June, that, that separation between the county, what a county does and what the city does really was a critical piece of so much of her work you know, and desire revolves around human services and we should continue to encourage her to get, you know, more involved. And now I thought CJ brought an interesting perspective and I'm kind of looking apparently backwards back up, but I think you guys identified the, you know, a couple of places and at the end of the day, I thought Beth was just a more well-rounded candidate. So then we're gonna vote when we get into the next place. I think Neil, you could have let them know if you want. I'm assuming they're all gonna stay around here or we can. I'm assuming they're all going to stay around here or we can spring it on, we can spring it on then when they, when we get that for.
So then if we do the election, are you gonna, are we gonna write that in there?
Like drag, like drag her up front? No, we're going to schedule it next week.
Oh.
Yeah, give her, like, her husband's not here, her kids aren't here, like give people a little bit of a warning. So we'll, we'll start a couple of minutes early.
Like put her in the hot seat, let's go.
I know, we're not going to have Chief Shear bring him up, right? Okay, I think we, we're ready for the.
He's gonna say no.
Maybe?
Yes.
So are you going, we're going to call for a vote and it's going to, is there going to, is there no motion? Or is there just a call for a vote or is there wording for that vote?
There's no motion. What we can do is the item will get called. It'd be helpful if maybe the mayor could sort of summarize that we've deliberated and we're ready to vote if that's the case. And then you can, Neil can just call each counselor and they can say their vote. We don't have to do nominations or a motion or anything like that.
Okay, I'm sure that's clear. I didn't find out now.
And it's all you guys, and you're ready. By introducing our Fire Marshal Travis Worthington to you all, if you haven't had a chance to, to meet him, we're, we're five months on.
Four.
Four.
Four and some change.
Doing some great work for, for the community, so.
Mayor Van Gordon, council members, manager, this is the city manager, appreciate the time tonight. Now we're talking about the proposed, proposed fire code ordinance. Give you a few minutes there. I have a presentation for you. I have my notes here too, so I can stay on track and efficient with the time. Hey, question as you have those. Why now? Why the fire code? Essentially adopting the twenty twenty-two Oregon Fire Code will help to improve the safety of the residents of the community. Visitors to Springfield, the code contains regulations and provisions that are specifically designed to reduce the risk of fires and other related hazards. Compliance is one of the other things we're achieving by adopting the twenty twenty-two Oregon Fire Code. City of Springfield will be in compliance with the state regulations. This can help to avoid any potential legal issues and ensure that the city is doing its part to uphold the state's minimum standards. Standardization is another reason for us to go ahead and adopt the Oregon Fire Code. It's widely recognized and adopted throughout the state. Adopting this code will help to standardize fire safety measures and procedures, which can make it easier for businesses and other organizations to comply with regulations and for residents to understand the rules. Cost effectiveness, while there's some upfront costs such as buying the new code documents and everything, it's going to be associated with implementing this code. Standardizing and putting in the fire safety measures and procedures will make it easier for businesses and organizations to comply. Also helps to risk, reduce the risk of fire-related damage, which can be resolved in significant cost savings over time. Final reputation by adopting the twenty twenty-two Oregon Fire Code, Springfield can demonstrate to the commitment to ensuring the safety of its residents and visitors. This can help to enhance the city's reputation as a safe place to live, work and visit, which can be beneficial to the local economy and the community as a whole. Questions on why we should adopt that twenty twenty-two Oregon backup? Proposed fee schedule? So with the proposed fee schedule, it's going to be a big overhaul what we were coming from versus what we need to go to. So just to give you a brief overview, previously we had approximately nine operational permits in the Fire Marshal's office. If we'd had been lumping in multiple operational permits into those different categories. So what we've tried to do is make it a lot more fair to the business community. So if you're a small mom and pop business, make it more affordable for you to be able to pull those operational permits you need for your fees. If you're a larger company, you know, paying your fair share essentially with that. The permit fee schedule that I've developed helps us to get some continuity between the two cities. It helps to relieve some of the administrative stress I have of having to do two different fee schedules. It's also, we've had questions even this last week where my staff went and did an inspection in Eugene, had an operational permit, came over Springfield, same owner, had a business over in Springfield as well, different fees. So they were like, why is the same person coming to do the same inspection and I'm having to pay those fees? I'm not sure why my predecessor had those lumped that way, but there are approximately fifty operational permits in the fire code. They were in there in the twenty nineteen fire code as well. So what I've tried to do is to align those operational permits we should be enforcing and administering to the community. It also would help us to administratively cover those costs and fees for doing that work in that business, which is the minimum requirement there. There are a few extra we've built into the operational permits, such as our vacant abandoned building structures that the survey we do now. So they cover this, the cost of performing those functions. So I've broken down the fee schedule, if you look at it, you'll see that it's based on what it actually costs the Fire Marshal Office to do business. So if you look at the base hour, a hundred dollars, that's what it costs me to pay an inspector for one hour. The overtime rates are also aligned with what I have to pay my inspectors on an overtime rate. And the required amount, like if I have a minimum for overtime, I have to pay through our effective bargaining, what do you get? So we have all that built in there. Some of the permits are what we call informational permits. So there's a lot of things that we're trying to accomplish with a fee schedule. It helps us to be aware of certain businesses and what type of hazardous materials or compressed gases, peroxen plastics, things that are a hazard to the community, but also the firefighters. So that's one thing we're also trying to accomplish with this comprehensive fee schedule is to identify those hazards so that we can pre-plan to address those should there be an incident at that business. Questions on that so far?
Are you going to go through the fees or you just?
This is the overview, I was given ten minutes, I'll be glad to answer any questions on any of the fees.
Why don't we get to the whole? I, I have a feeling when the questions start, right, we're going to get it rolling pretty quick here.
Okay.
Right.
Right on that. New big thing coming on in the Oregon Fire Code is there's a whole new chapter concerning mobile food units and pods. I know this will have impact in the business community. What we're trying to be driven to do is to form a regional agreement. So this is what the state Fire Marshal has advised jurisdictions is that if I have a jurisdiction near me like Ben, for example, if I have a food service truck that maybe does business in Ben, but they live in Eugene, we align our inspection criteria and operational permit so that they will recognize my permits and I'll recognize their permits. So it helps to kind of regionally affect that. They don't have to get a permit in every city they go to, they can just streamline operations for the business. So that's one thing we'll have to accomplish with the food units, also pods. So it could be our businesses with like a brewery and multiple food carts or pods. There's new, some new regulations regarding their LP gas and how they store their chemicals and how they run their lines. So there's a good bit of new code that's going to impact that business. So we're going to have to work as a community to look at those, see that works with our development and our business model that we're going to be going for. So there's going to have to be some balance there, there's going to be, be some time for implementation. It's not what I'm going to immediately hammer as soon as you approve the fire code. No, that doesn't mean we immediately go to this, we're going to have to have some informational education, work with that business group, probably have some town hall meetings where we can sit down with them, discuss what's going to work for them. So not proposing that we immediately go right into enforcing this. It's probably going to have to be a start date like around January one would be my recommendation. Not to give me six months or so to be able to work with those groups, educate them, let them know what's coming their way. Vacant abandoned buildings, premises, structures. So with the downturn in the economy, we start seeing a lot more vacant buildings. These could be problematic for us. The National Fire Protection Agency has put out some information saying that these type of fires in an abandoned or vacant building is the most dangerous for firefighters. We often have many fatalities with this associated. This also could be community blight. There's a lot of things tied to these vacant abandoned structures. We said we see unhoused, getting access to some buildings, starting warming or cooking fires. We've had several here recently. This program that we're initiating will help to make it safer for us to quickly identify buildings, what their status is after we've done the survey and placard them accordingly. So police, fire, EMS, anybody building official could roll up to a building, see that it may be abandoned or vacant and identify what the status is, could actually go in that structure if they needed to. So this will also help to save lives, not only just for firefighters, but the community, police, EMS, everybody involved. So this is one of the programs we're really excited about. Other jurisdictions have gone something a little bit lighter where they just have a big U on the building. But we realize that that should limit our operations. We want to be able to make those risky saves when we can do the job we are meant to do as firefighters, to get in and save lives and conserve property. And this will help us do that. There are eighty-seven proposed amendments. So in the previous cycle, I believe I counted sixty-one in the twenty nineteen edition of the Fire Code that was amended and adopted by the City of Springfield. Eighty-seven is what we have built in this one. I have ran this through the building official, my staff, I've also talked with community development. I've talked with the state Fire Marshal and city attorney's office. So at this point, the eighty-seven amendments you have before you have already been vetted through that whole group. So if you had input on any of those amendments, now's the time for us to make those final changes if we can. Most of the amendments exist in the administrative chapter, which is operational permits, authority jurisdiction. Nothing really major in there. If the operational permit, if you look at that, we grouped those in three. So the Fire Code gives us the ability to do multiple permits and group those. So if I have a business that has multiple operational permits, and that would be three hundred dollars, two hundred dollars and four hundred dollars. The code, the way we've written the amendment, gives me the ability to group those three permits and only charge them the one highest fee. The next three would also help them. So if they had a fourth permit and it was only twenty-five dollars, we would allow them just to pay that twenty-five. But we would group those in threes depending on how many operational permits that they would actually have. So we have built that in thinking of, again, the smaller businesses and the larger businesses being, you know, fair to them as well. The only thing not built into the proposed amendments and the fee schedules is the compliance engine. So currently we've been using the compliance engine since two thousand fourteen. This is a reporting system where the fire protection providers actually report up. And we look at that information, tells us about their sprinkler systems, fire alarms, hood suppression systems, anything that's in the Fire Code required to be reported up to the Fire Marshal's office. This program helps us to manage that program. We've always just been what they call the base fee, where they pay the base fee, we get nothing of it, but we don't have to manage it or expend administrative staff time to actually work with that program. We're asking to go to a revenue share program, which is what other cities of our size have done. So Salem, Ben, Grants Pass, close by cities have all gone to the revenue share with the client engine. So this will help us to again, be able to monitor, generate some revenue and offset our administrative costs. There's not been a fee increase, it was fifteen dollars, has been since two thousand fourteen. We're asking to go to thirty dollars, which is what's going on in Oregon, that's the typical cost to upload a report. I got.
Questions? Questions? I've never heard fees that low before. So yeah, all the low fees I see, those are all new fees, right?
So they were in the Fire Code, we just were not recognizing them in the fee schedule in the twenty nineteen Fire Code adopted last week.
So I'm curious of the eighty-seven changes in the code that are indicated by the state Fire Marshals, all right? So are any of those something that we initiated, you or?
So the Fire Code comes to us, we write the amendments to make it fit for what we need. We can go more stringent, but we can't go less than that minimum.
So is, what was the minimum number of changes? Did you go more stringent on any of them?
We had to go more stringent on all of them, some of them were just terminology changes.
I'm talking about not, not with the, I know we have a current one that's out of date, right? That's my take on it. And so I know if there's changes, then we're, if they're more stringent, of course, we have to modify our code to meet those more stringent changes, correct?
Correct.
I get that. So was there any of those changes that were made internally more stringent than what the state prescribed?
In some cases, yes. There were a few codes that we did go a little more stringent just to comply with what we saw locally that we need to adhere to.
Match what we've been doing with, and how many, about how many of those? And which ones were they, were they the twenty-five dollar ones or were they the two thousand dollar ones or?
So there's two different things, there's, there's the fee schedule. And the fee schedule, the Fire Code has, just in the Fire Code, about fifty-two operational permits that the Fire Marshal is supposed to administer and oversee. That is separate from the eighty-seven Fire Code amendments we've actually issued. So the Fire Code amendments be like, instead of saying the state Fire Marshal, it says the Springfield Eugene Fire Marshal essentially. So we have that built in. A lot of those amendments are just, no, like you're saying, like Springfield Code rather than Fire Code. So a lot of that was vetted through the city attorney's office.
And so I saw several that the current fee schedule is more than what the recommended change is, which is, so that's a reduction in fees, is that, can I read that correctly?
If you're talking about the fee schedule, there's one in particular I could address, you have that?
Yeah, which page? Here. I'm looking at page seven of ten under HPM facilities, currently is four hundred and fifty dollars and the new fee schedule recommend is two hundred.
Correct.
So that's a reduction.
So again, our previous fee schedule, we had lumped a lot of these operational permits that are supposed to be separated out. We had been lumping them all under like hazmat.
Right.
So like, for example, the hazmat, you'll notice that I've separated those out and broke those in groups. So you have like one to four hazardous materials reported. That's a base of two hundred dollars, that reflects the amount of administrative costs it takes us just to administer that permit. And then we've scaled it up so that mom and pop can afford to report three chemicals and only pay two hundred dollars. But if I'm a major company that's reporting twenty-plus chemicals, I'll have to pay more because it takes more administrative time for us to process, review that hazardous materials inventory statement.
Well, it's not like this, this particular permit, for example, the high pile storage, I mean, I'm sorry, the HPM facilities where those may actually, it's not like a one permit fits all, it's, it's that particular fee went to two hundred because there's other now, other permits that they must now purchase that will add on top of that.
Right, previously we were putting like compressed gases, hazardous materials, HPM facilities, high pile storage on the one fee. So we were kind of missing the revenue stream there, if you look in that aspect. But also we weren't addressing and getting the information back that they actually had a hazardous, you know, producing material on a facility, so.
And then when you have, and I, I see that there's several new ones added on, a bunch of new ones added on. And there's a lot of them that, you know, for example, as Steve was mentioning, they're, they're cheap, it's like twenty-five dollars.
So those are new to Springfield fee schedule, again, we didn't recognize them in the previous fee schedule. So they've been in the Fire Code.
Right.
We've just not been collecting the data or initiating those operational permits like we should have.
So you want, you want to start charging?
In some cases, yes.
Okay. So have you done the, have you, I assume you've done the numbers in regards to what is the net result? Or what's the bottom line on this change of what kind of revenue, new revenue will be generated? How much is that?
No, so that's going to be difficult because again, we were lumping everything like, it was like four hundred and fifty dollars covers hazard materials. Well, we didn't know if they were press gases, you know, was that a hazardous material? Was it, you know, oxygen? They had them all lumped into one criteria. So it's going to be really hard for me to say we were generating X amount of revenue or will generate an X amount of revenue. Right now, we need to clean up the fee schedules, separate all those operational permits out, probably have a year cycle to determine who's reporting what. And again, some of these, we're probably going to have a very small percentage of industry that's going to report anything. Some of these are not going to really impact most businesses. I'd say you're probably going to have about twenty percent of the businesses that may see a little bit more, they're going to have to pay because they've been paying a straight four hundred and fifty dollars, but they may have two hundred chemicals they're reporting. So that really wasn't fair again to the mom and pops. And it takes us a lot more time to review a two hundred, two hundred page list or two hundred item list of materials and make sure their quantities are accurate than it does for three.
So my first, one of my first thoughts too is that, and I'm not, I'm not a poster, I just want to be able to have a good understanding of it. So we have several new cat, not, that's certain new categories, I got corrected on that. It was so many different places that we are, we're going to start charging for those. And so what I'm curious is that if you haven't, if there hasn't been any action or contact or time spent on businesses that have not had permits, therefore no inspections, there are no contact with Fire Marshal or that contact have been done and we've been paying, having to pay for the time for that contact, but no permit fees versus are these businesses that have never had that contact, therefore no cost to the city? Now we'll have permits. And then if we have permits, then it's going to force contact with the fire. And then how much more time? Or is that going to require additional FTE to administer the program that you're suggesting?
The way the fee schedule is established, it will cover my cost for that. So I should be able to manage this fee schedule with the staff I currently have. Now, down the road, a couple of years, we see, yes, this is starting to generate a lot more work and we may have to revisit that.
So that's my only fears is, you know, throwing seeds in a bucket there and seeing what almost appears though is we're going to see what grows. And because we don't know how much revenue is going to generate, so therefore we don't know how much we need to set aside. And we haven't mentioned about if there's excess range, if it's not having to cost you more FTE and it's creating revenue, where is that revenue going to be earmarked for if it's not costing you? If it doesn't cost you more staff?
So trying to just equate it at this point in time and trying to sort it. So I'm not certain what my predecessors were trying to achieve. Can't speak on behalf of chief cavens predecessors either, but. Trying to fix it essentially at this point in time. So step one is going to be fix it, separate it out. After we've done a cycle, a year of permits to see, oh, we know how many we have of this and how many we have of that. We'll have a much clearer picture on what the revenue generation is going to be and what the impact to our operations.
Can I just step in just briefly on that? As we look into the forecast and the budget and making sure that we have ways that we're capturing to pay for the things that don't necessarily need to be weighing on the general fund as it tries to solve problems in the out years. This will help make sure we're kind of in alignment there, you know, the investment in the fire marshal's offices.
I agree. I support, I mean, I, I support what the idea behind it and the thought process behind it. I'm just, I'm very skeptical in regards to, there's just a few questions that are kind of like, kind of like saying, okay, well, let's let it out of the bag here and see what happens. And that's a little scary for an electric official. Meaning I, I, I want to, you know, we should be aligned. I think it's, I think it's a good idea, but I would like a little comfort or a little, or at least some feedback on a periodic basis as it's moving along to see what's happening. And then if we all say, hey, you know, do it, that's great, then that stamp is stamped. And then what did we create and what's going to go? Do we have a back door? Do we have an off ramp? Do we have ability to change, I suppose? What do you think?
We'd have the ability to change. And also keep in mind, we've added three new staff here in the last few months. So myself, and then we had a new administrative assistant come on, and then one DFM one and two life safety inspectors. So my capacity to be able to support this work is there now.
I didn't know that.
So yeah, yeah, we have done that. Wasn't aware you weren't updated with that. But we do have those two new life safety inspectors, one more DFM one, and then administrative staff now that we've not had for many years in the fire marshal's office.
And that's not all Springfield positions, so. I saw the concern going out.
All right.
Thank you. Um, thank you for this, and I appreciate the effort to like do a little set and clean up and start fresh. Um, part of what I heard you say, kind of bouncing off of what Council Bishop said, you mentioned data a couple of times, and it sounds like pulling these out is going to help us also to get a more clear understanding of exactly who's got what and who's doing what. Because if it's all lumped together, we don't necessarily know. What, what are the chemicals that are being used in a particular piece of property? Yeah. Okay. And I appreciate that because I think that's, you know, moving forward, that gives us a much better idea where we're at.
Yeah, a good example for this is peroxyl and plastics, which has been in the fire code as operation for years. We weren't recording any data on that. That is very flammable. I mean, twenty five pounds of that is very bad. So knowing who actually has an historian that would be something we need to know. It doesn't cost us a lot to know that knowledge, but the fact that we weren't asking for it, we weren't getting information back. So again, that's just an example of one of those things that we have it as like a zero or twenty five dollars just to report it. That's just so I can tell operations, okay, this is the place where they have this. So if you have a buyer, be careful and know where it's located in our branch of the planet.
And secondarily, just, this is just an appreciation. I also really appreciate the, the sort of noticing on the vacant buildings. Because, you know, just supporting, we've, we had a fire and death scare bring them up very long ago. And just to know that our first responders know what they're getting into, I appreciate that move.
I keep telling people we're in prevention, not reaction. So my, at least my side of the house and operations side of the house, they're in the reaction side. That means we didn't succeed in being preventative. But for example, like the guest house, and that was where we did a really good job, worked with everybody as a group, identified the issue and adjusted for it when we needed to, because otherwise it could have been a really bad incident for us.
So thank you.
Victoria?
So first of all, I want to say thank you. It sounds like the fees have been changed since two thousand fourteen, is that what I heard you say?
On a compliance engine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, um, there were some of them that I was really surprised that we, that we weren't collecting or charging for these multiple false alarms. And I'm really pleased to see that there's some type of a consequence for that because I don't think people realize the amount of cost that they're generating and the, and the manpower, person power that that causes. And I liked the fact that it was okay on the third one, and now on the fourth, it goes up even more. I think that that, there has to be a consequence that hurts enough that people will make the change. And so I'm really pleased to see that coming on board. And I'm not usually a big fan of fees, but on that one, I think that's a great idea. I also want to comment on that abandoned building thing. I, I think I saw something or read about them doing that in Chicago and how it's really helped them. And I think they do have just the U on the building, but still knowing what you're going into and the way you have those three levels, that's, that's just a, that's a bad idea. And I'm so grateful that you guys are going to be pursuing that. So good job on this. I appreciate having fresh blood in here and someone who doesn't just say, well, this is the way we've always done it. I really appreciate having someone kind of go, wait a second, why are we doing it this way? And what are they? And it sounds like you're really doing that. So right on, good job.
To tie into the nuisance fire alarm too, we've also implemented that literally last week, the impairment notification. So we have an impairment notification now when somebody's going to take their sprinkler system offline. We have a process for them to actually report that to us so we can let operations know, okay, between the hours of this time and this time on the state, you're going to have an issue if you have a fire allocation. So we've got that and the fire watch protocols worked out and it all is tied together with vacant unsafe buildings.
Well, fireworks, like I don't want people having fireworks shows and don't have permits and aren't being, you know, and if they have to pay a fee at a certain amount, we know that they at least have some level of professionalism and they're going to be doing it right. So yeah, I was really, I was really impressed. So thanks.
Um, I've got a couple of questions here, especially if a vacant building piece. I'm, I'm assuming when that's adopted from a program, that's going to roll out with training in both the fire department and, and the local police departments.
Correct. And building officials too. Yeah. Because right now, when we do conduct investigation, we do report, it's a damaged building report. It's a one pager. But our vacant abandoned building survey is much more in depth and gives all that same information. So again, it'll go out to police, it'll go out to EMS, it'll go out to the building officials, code compliance. We're working hand in hand with Charlie Kent's group, you know, with that as well. So we just actually did one last week where we jumped on their administrative warrant, went in there, able to do our survey and work with them to help get the place boarded up and secured. So.
And when you put the U up, it, you guys have actually boarded the building and it is, it is actually secured. And the reason I'm asking is, you know, we had a vacant building fire out here probably a year ago. Um, and I guess I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that if you put a U on a building, that we may think it, there's nobody in it.
Come on in and camp.
Yeah, that's so. From the operational side of, of things, what we look at there is to inform, we're still going to aggressively search any building in a fire, make sure there's no life in there. We understand those risks. It's just we're going to call for the additional resources because we know it's a high risk surge.
Perfect. Against the call out, that stuff that could get our firefighters killed or injured.
In. In my financing perspective, I know there was, there was a lot of questions about how much, how much revenue that we're, you know, that is sort of raising. And what I'm hearing is, you guys describe it, I'm sort of hearing that, A, look, it might be a little bit more, a little bit less than we raised last year because we, we've got a new fee structure. But if it came in, we're not expecting this to come raised three times as much of revenue.
I do know.
Okay.
Yeah. No, I mean, we may have a little increase there. And again, if we need to come back next year and say, okay, we've identified we're having a lot of these permits and it doesn't cost us as much time to administer, we need to lower that permit fee, I would do so.
And from a fee perspective, we are co-adapt, but we will have the same exact fees between the Eugene side and the Springfield side.
Other than the fireworks. Other displays.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. We don't have the wholesale over there. And I don't know if you caught that, but we weren't involved in the inspecting of the consumer fireworks sales stands. There was like a fifty three dollar fee that was in the general fee schedule, but we weren't getting notified to go and inspect it to make sure they were following rule as far as that stand goes. So this will help bring us in line with that.
Perfect. Quick, just a quick questions follow up. I really appreciate all the questions. Got a lot of, a lot of my thoughts are going back. But I'm much more settled and I appreciate that. So, but just a quick follow up. So I'm going to write down, you said that if you find that the revenue is coming in higher than expected, then you would lower the fees.
If we needed to. If we're, if we're seeing that we're hitting operational permits, it's showing that a lot of people are reporting on it and they're thinking, oh, this, you know, we shouldn't be paying that much.
I tell you, that'd be great. I mean, as far as if you guys did actually come back and say this is higher than expected, we're not meeting, you know, it's beyond what our cost is and that we are looking at reducing that. I'll tell you, that would go a huge way in the community. I just know that.
I'm very thoughtful of that because I only want to reclaim our cost. That's all I'm trying to do is cover my administrative costs to get that information into the department. It's not to generate three or four times the revenue. And again, like previously, we were four hundred and fifty dollars. That four hundred and fifty dollars was for a big company or a small company. So I got to report two chemicals and I got to pay, I mean, I've heard those, I've been on those phone calls. And I'm like, yeah, you're right, we need to fix that. So that's, you'll see it's now scaled.
And this may be down into the minutia. You're talking about point permits in groups of three, and then if they pull a commit, the next one commit is like twenty five dollars. And it's, and you have these other fees, and you're talking about how one, the highest one will offset the other fees. So who's going to determine, are you going to work with the committee in regards to coming out with the least cost of however the combination is?
Yeah. Okay. So yeah, if I had three hundred, four hundred, five hundred on the first three.
Right.
They'd pay the five hundred and they get all three. If they had two more and one was a hundred and fifty and another one was twenty five, we let them pick a point on the second.
Okay, no, great.
So if it's an individual, then they get to another three. So if they had six total, then they'd pay the two highest fees of the six.
No, I appreciate that. And one little technical question here in regards to your explosive section, one oh five point five point one six, page four top ten or page four of ten at the top in regards to exemption. The storage in group R three occupancies of smokeless propellants, black powder, small arms, primers for personal use, not for resale in accordance with section fifty six oh six. I assume that they're, that you're referring to is, and that's for personal use, obviously, maybe, right?
Yeah, that, so like residential doesn't.
For the reloaders.
Right. If you're a reloader, it doesn't impact you.
Yeah, and that's what I'm reading. But this is, is it, because I don't know what the group R or section is. Is there amounts restrictions in regards for residential storage and smokeless powders? Or if not, if.
Yeah, so residential, I have no jurisdiction there. ATF may have some requirements and that would go through PD.
Okay.
Yeah. If it's a residential, like again, I'm buying black powder to reload my bullets. None of my business essentially.
I, I would love to know. So if we were finding a fire trial, so yeah, yeah. So I, I really appreciate this presentation. I literally had all kinds of angst previous to this. And the way you explained it makes complete sense to me and I, I support it.
All right. Well, thank you so much for the time. I can tell you that I speak for everybody here, seeing the fire department show up, you know, with a, a good work session. It's good to see you guys. And I hope we see you more shit, but.
Good job.
All right, we are adjourned.
I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Springfield City Council to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Counselor Weber.
Here.
Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Doyle.
Here.
And Counselor Bishopery.
Here, thank you.
Uh, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with which we do not interfere.
As we begin our meeting tonight, there are two designated, there are two designated times for public testimony this evening under public hearings and business from the audience. If you are attending in person, please complete the request to speak card located at the entrance of the council chambers and give them to the city recorder. If you are joining us with a tablet, smartphone and computer and wish to speak either of those times, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. The order of the public testimony is follows. Anyone in person in the council chambers and then anyone who is going to raise their virtual, virtual hand. First item, please.
Mayor, the first item is Springfield upbeat item number one, mayor's recognition, National Library Week proclamation. And this is your item, Mayor.
All right, I'll read this in the record and I see some folks from the library here for, for, for the picture. Whereas libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning and allow them to live their best life. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions for all members of community, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed or ability, sexual orientation or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are diverse as the populations they serve. Whereas libraries adapt to the ever changing needs of their communities and continue to adapt collection services and partnerships. Whereas libraries are the cornerstones of democracy and promote the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Whereas libraries, librarians and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across this nation to celebrate National Library Week. I Sean Van Gordon, Mayor Springfield, do proclaim April twenty third through twenty ninth, twenty twenty three, National Library Week. Next item, please.
Next item is the consent calendar.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to first pull item five A from the consent counter before we entertain a motion. So I'd like to make a motion for the consent counter excluding five A.
Second.
Neil, could you call a vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
Hi.
And Counselor Bishopery.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, five yeses, zero noes. Um, so let's go to five A, please.
Um, Mayor, five A is authorizing the city manager to sign contract C three, three, four, two with Dow Consulting Engineers for six hundred and fifty four thousand, five hundred and twenty six dollars. And this is the forty second street paving. And Jeff Pascal is here if he needs some information.
I ask that this item be polled because I think this is a pretty big deal. Oftentimes in our community, we're asked about forty second street between probably International Paper and, and Markola Road. And this is initial work that's starting on working on that road. And I just wanted a second for Jeff to just explain for, for everybody what a great first step this was.
Yeah, so thank you, Mayor, uh, Counsel. Uh, the first goal tonight obviously is to get this contract approved by the council so the city manager can sign that. But how we got here is we received twelve million dollars from, through state legislation in two thousand seventeen that we received from ODOT last year, recognized this year. Um, and what we're doing is with the approval of the council leadership of, a little about a month ago, we moved forward with a, a request for proposals, received one proposal to go ahead and start engineering and conduct a paving project to do a preservation project on that section of forty second street. Um, part of the reason is this is going to be a very, in what I would say, an interim preservation project, so ten to fifteen years, because the future of forty second street is really tied to the forty second street levy, which is, needs to be reconstructed. So at some point, and so this will be that interim paving piece to smooth out the paving. And then we're still looking at potential traffic, transportation, temporary tra- traffic measures as well.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions? All right. Joe?
I'd like to make a motion to pass five A.
Second.
Neil?
Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
Hi.
And Counselor Bishopery.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next item, please.
Next item, you have two public hearings this evening. Public hearing number one is annexation of territory to the city of Spring, of Springfield, annexing point three, six acres of residential property located at four zero nine six North Street. Let's map eighteen dash zero two dash zero six dash eleven, tax lot zero four zero zero, and concurrently annex a segment of North Street. Again, this is ordinance number one and ordinance annexing certain territories, four zero nine six North Street and approximately. Again, this is ordinance number one and ordinance annexing certain territories, four zero nine six North Street and approximately a six hundred thirty foot long segment of North Street to the city of Springfield and Willamette Park and Recreation District. With drawing the same territory from the Willikenzie Rural Fire Protection District, adopting a severability clause and providing an effective date. Um, Tom Severs is here for the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and councillors. Uh, as you recall, on April third, we left the public hearing open to allow sufficient, uh, public comment time due to a typo that went into the, uh, public, um, notice that was published in the newspaper. So tonight, we're just here to have any further deliberation that might be needed, uh, hear from any public that might be here tonight. We did not receive any written comments, uh, during that time. So barring that, uh, you may be free to take action.
All right, since the public hearing is still open, um, I do not have any cards for this item.
Does not appear we have any hands online for this item.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and then can we take action on this tonight? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number one.
Second.
Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Councillor Weber.
Yes.
Councillor Mo.
Yes.
Councillor Rodley.
Yes.
Councillor Doyle.
Hi.
And Councillor Pictionary.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, five yeses, zero noes. Next item, please.
Your second public hearing is the camping ordinance. This is ordinance number two, an ordinance repealing and replacing Springfield Municipal Code, section five point one, three, zero, relating to prohibited camping on public property. Mary Bridget Smith is here for the staff report.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here, uh, this evening to continue our conversation about, um, amending the city's camping code to be compliant with HB thirty-one fifteen. This is the first review of the code. Um, this evening I have a short presentation, a PowerPoint prepared. I was thinking I could go through that and then, um, you could conduct a public hearing and then I could come back for any, um, follow-up or questions and specific direction for, um, next steps, if that sounds all right. Does that work? Okay.
See. We already have a question.
Oh, okay.
Just a quick one. So, uh, council input, but there's not this meeting, next meeting or what time, what?
This meeting.
And that's gonna be after the show and after public comment or before public?
Uh, I was thinking it could be after public comment, but whenever you want.
Just needed to know when. Thanks.
Okay. Looking at the item, uh, tonight, the action requested tonight is to conduct a public hearing and first reading of a draft ordinance with a draft, uh, camping code section. Um, we also will have a discussion about adoption process, uh, public comment, a little bit of context around the public comment, and then some specific questions about the draft code. Uh, I think you've seen this slide before. This is just my, um, reminder about the legal backdrop about what we're doing here today. This is, um, the idea, we've had some recent, uh, court rulings and then HB thirty-one fifteen is a state statute that talks about a city or county regulating the acting of, uh, sleeping or keeping warm outside on public property. Those regulations must be objectively reasonable using the totality of the circumstances. And then this box on the left talks about a government entity cannot criminalize conduct that is an unavoidable consequence of being homeless, namely sitting, lying or sleeping. That's from, um, the Boise, uh, Martin case. And there was also a case that grants passed with a similar, um, holding. So just to give some context for this, um, discussion. And also, I think as you look through the public comment and hear comment tonight, obviously a really, um, charged issue and just acknowledging that this is a tough issue for people to talk about and impacts the community. Um, some of the things you may hear tonight, um, may not necessarily apply to camping on public property. And if you'll have other direction at some point about looking into other options, we totally understand. Um, but keeping in mind that what we're talking about tonight is sheltering on public property, which is a narrow slice of, um, issues involving homelessness in our community. So I want to talk a little bit about process. Um, in order to pass an ordinance here, the council does that in a regular session by a vote after deliberation and the ordinance has to be read twice. Typically, an ordinance will be read, uh, in open session. There may be a public hearing and then it will be put on the consent calendar and then adopted. In this case, um, that could happen. That's one option. You could take the code as it is drafted tonight and say, that looks fine, move it forward for adoption like normal. Or you could, after hearing public testimony and having your own deliberation, provide direction to staff to say, I want you to change these aspects of the code. Then it would be brought back to you on May first for essentially a new first reading and then it would get read again. So it just would have one more step of process for the public to be able to view the quote, new code based on your deliberations. And then the third option could be that if you get lots of public input tonight, um, you could decide on, we have a date set aside on May first sometime. You want additional time for the public to be able to weigh in and additional time to deliberate. And then if that's option three that you choose, then we can just sort of decide, you can provide direction about how you want to see May first, um, that meeting go. And then depending on that direction, we could come up with a schedule moving forward for later in May and into June. Um, but you do have dates set aside for, uh, May first now and then, uh, just a draft consent day on May fifteenth, I believe. Does that make sense for process? Any questions there about? Okay. All right, and then, um, this next part is about the draft code itself. There were some, um, questions that I wanted, um, to put before you as part of your deliberations or items to consider, um, that I thought it would just be helpful to have a discussion about as opposed to getting into a long, um, drawn-out written communication in the packet. So, um, some items that I will be asking about would be enforcement in terms of the revised fine amount. Um, and if you have other questions about enforcement generally, for example, who would be doing the enforcement? What would that look like? Um, and then another, um, issue would be, um, we had talked and had, there was direction about the twenty-four hour time limit and then there were other conversation about, you know, do you, and this is something we'd seen in other jurisdictions. Should you limit, for example, in one area, like one block face, only having a certain number of camp, uh, people camping in that area at a time? Or require them to move every twenty-four hours like down the block? Um, in some conversations with the police department, that could be, um, could be challenges with enforcing that. And so it's removed from this draft code, but it's some, if it's something that you want to see back in, we can certainly add that back in. So if you're wondering where that was, that was just based on the discussion with, uh, staff about the realities of enforcement. So I wanted to bring that to your attention tonight. Um, some, uh, points about location, parks are explicitly listed in this, um, draft code. That's a carryover from the old code. I know that parks are a different, uh, special district, but looking at the public feedback about parks and since we had it in the old code made sense to just carry it over to the new one. But if that's something that the council wants to look at, that could be something. Um, also explicitly talking about access, we have an older cold, code section that talks about, um, that people can't prohibit access to entrances. But that wasn't quite expansive enough for kind of the issues that we're seeing people have when there are some homeless camping in right away around sidewalks and then people are trying to get to their business. And so added that back into, um, this draft code. And then, um, also there's a provision that excludes this type of camping on public property that happens to be close to, um, sanctioned, uh, emergency, um, shelter, um, or sheltering, uh, programs. Another thing that we had seen in other jurisdictions, trying to protect those sorts of transitional housing from having a, um, kind of donut around it that may have some unsanctioned camping. So one idea there. And then also a thought about, um, another area about location would be that this draft explicitly excludes residential areas um, from have, being public property in residential areas, that there be no camping there. But the council may want to consider other areas around the city that may not be zoned residentially, but may be important, such as downtown, to be specifically called out. So something else to think about. And then, um, just a quick summary on public input. We tried to get input in a number of ways. Obviously, there's this traditional format here with the public hearing. Uh, we got quite a few emails to the city attorney's office. That's in your packet. There, we did also try to do an intentional reach out to certain stakeholders. Um, tried an online survey, which is a new tool for us, but it was just trying to get at people who may not have the, um, ability to be able to come in and comment at a council meeting. So first time we've done this, we did get some good feedback about maybe questions being, um, confusing or ambiguous and some nice feedback from people who have experience with these types of surveys that I'm hoping we can use for future ones. And then left a paper survey at Ebert Memorial, um, or Ebert Methodist Church. They do, um, meals a couple of times a week for, um, homeless individuals and it was a good way to get that perspective as well and that's included in your packet. Um, and then really that's just the end of my remarks in terms of, uh, I'll be back after you conduct the public hearing to go through probably in more detail the process issues and the, and the, um, draft code. Also looking for on the survey if it is still open and looking for a date certain to close it and recommending that it be closed this Friday so we can get you a final report of all the information in the survey and get that posted for the community. That's all I have right now unless someone has further questions and then, um, I'll be back after you take the testimony.
Uh, are there any questions?
Nope.
Did I?
You, you can ask some clear, if you have questions for clarification, not deliberations.
Did I hear you say you took the twenty-four hour period out?
No, the twenty-four period is in there. What was removed is limiting the number of camps in a certain area or asking people to move like down the block face.
Thank you.
Uh, so the one question I have is around the prohibition in public parks. I know that we kind of went back and forth with Willamette Lane just because they're a separate entity. Is that, I guess, language compliant with what the position of their board is?
I believe so. I mean, they have a process that they use through their park rangers for, um, addressing camping and exclusions. They're subject to the court rulings, but not the statute. So they have sort of a different, uh, legal responsibility here. Um, so I believe prohibiting it in parks is my understanding that it's compliant.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, um, before we start, Neil, can you let us know how many folks are online?
Uh, we have approximately twenty-six attendees online.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I'm gonna call folks forward, um, and then you'll get three minutes if you can state your name and, uh, area or address for the record. There are some people in here that are not from the city of Springfield, so please state which city you're from so that we can, um, wo- work through this accordingly. And I just want to acknowledge some of the, if you do not want to talk specifically to the camping ordinance, then I, just let me know and I can put you in the, put you in the public, uh, the business from the audience ca- uh, category. There's some fo- some, uh, subject lines that I'm not quite sure if this is the specific item that you want to talk to. First person is Chris McAllister.
Mister Mayor, esteemed members of the council, my name is Chris McAllister and I come from Ward Three. I'm here to, uh, discuss as a resident and as a public servant on the topic of homelessness. The fact that we, uh, have an issue that we don't quite know how to tackle. I'd like to first thank you for helping us with eager efforts, Anne's heart, by lifting up the members of the guest house during their struggle this last winter and for expanding the car camping beds. I find the ordinance to be in the spirit of protecting the city's interests, but not necessarily in the body of work from the, uh, the state's expectations. We are supposed to make sure that we cover all of our bases and if we cannot cover our bases, that we have a space for them to be. So our people need to be seen. I currently have sheltered approximately seven hundred cumulative years of experience of residency and Eugene camps. I have over forty people in Eugene camps from Springfield because there's no safe place to be in Springfield for Springfielders. Our ordinance here talks about what not to do, where not to be, how not to be. It does not prescribe where Springfielders go. Where Springfield, Springfielders need to be when they're displaced seniors, when they are displaced. Some disabled veterans and when we have people seeking hospice, there's no place in this ordinance for that. We already are doing hospice for people on the streets and tents. Where do we send our people? Having no legs makes county beds unacceptable. Having no access to electricity means the CPAP machine cannot be plugged in. We don't see answers in these ordinances. We see, or you people can't be. I understand and I respect the leeway given to our city manager to be able to solve problems. But we need to have a prescriptive way of where people should be. This town rose in twenty twenty to serve against the winter and virus. It rose again when twice came the fires. In twenty twenty-three, we faced the perfect storm, both a crisis and of a reckoning. As we carve out our next steps and we do so in a manner that builds up people and prevents the deaths. A third of the people we helped out in twenty twenty are dead. A third of them are housed. And a third of them are still struggling. Cottage Grove did a great job. They've been working on this for two Octobers. They have a place where people go. Where if that fills up, where they go next, that fills up, where they go next. They started to showcase how the city takes advantage of its opportunities and leverages funds for its people. So people can be in the towns where they're from, where they were born and where their kids are. Where do our single, single senior women go next week, women? Where do our veterans who are discharged into hospice go tomorrow? With the drug so bad in the state, where do those, where do I shelter the people who are in recovery, who need to be away from the drugs? Not put in a cookie cutter group setting where their dealer may be. We have turned the key over and the question remains, where do we start with designated spots for Springfielders to regain their spark? I thank you for your time. Thank you for your service and I, uh, just wanna implore you to remember our people. Let them be seen.
Thank you. Gary Baldwin.
Thank you. My name is Gary Baldwin and, um, my wife and I own a small strip mall on fourteenth, in northeast corner of fourteenth and Main, directly east of seven eleven. And I realize that this, uh, particular ordinance has to do with public land, but you need to know how it affects private land as well. Because all access roads travel right around private land. Uh, we've owned the property since nineteen, uh, nineteen ninety. We put approximately a million dollars into it and sadly, we've seen tremendous effect since, uh, the, uh, November third, twenty twenty passing of measure one, Senate Measure one-ten, when, uh, they uh, simply allowed hard drugs to not be, uh, if you will, criminal, criminalized. So what happened then is that the people moved onto the, the public land. That is true. But secondarily, when it rains, when it snows, when it's cold, they move under the structures that happen to be there, which could be seven eleven or it could be our mall, it could be your home. But the fact of the matter is, we get everything from human waste to, uh, sex items, to drug paraphernalia. And it's constant. And not only that, when it's cold outside, they light fires under the parapet on fourteenth and Main. Uh, this has impacted your police because we have to call the police, we have signs up and so forth. Uh, I will say one thing, we all signed into, um, Measure one-ten because we believed that it would take the, the profits from marijuana or cannabis and it would send it towards rehabilitation for the individuals that are out there. Fact of the matter is, it didn't because quite frankly, they capped it at, at ninety million on that. And then finally, we failed to realize that there is a positive and negative effect to whether you behave correctly or not. So shortly after, who, I guess my question is this, who's going to manage and enforce the regulations as far as time? And who's going to do that? Is there gonna be a department? Are you gonna pay for that? How are you gonna pay for it? Who is going to take care of the portable restrooms and the other hygiene features that are on these locations? Who's gonna pay for that? Who's going to watch over the unruly and threatening behaviors that are already affecting our people on our property? And they have the right to carry and they have threatened to use it. Finally, who is going to pay for the continual maintenance of the property? Who is it? Is it gonna be us? Secondarily, does the city really have, uh, a city of Springfield have the legal right to manage designated open spaces that are not public property? Those are questions I have and I just thought I'd bring them up tonight before we make a decision on this. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. David Lovell.
The mayor, esteemed colleagues and councillors. My name is David Love. I live at sixteen fifty-seven Delrose and I'm coming to you and testifying as a public citizen, a downtown developer, a thirty-five-year Springfield resident and a longtime minister to the needy across the globe. You've been asked by our governor to come up with rules and ordinance whereby houseless individuals. You've been asked by our governor to come up with rules and ordinance whereby houseless individuals may camp on public property because of a Boise Idaho lawsuit that states if there's no beds for them to be in, trespassing and squatting cannot be cited or deemed illegal. Our overnight bed space in our county currently operates at only 80% capacity. This means we have anywhere between 70 and 120 beds available every night. Further, the definition of public property is not our sidewalks, parking strips or curbside spaces or doorways of businesses after hours. Every private property line extends beyond the sidewalks into the street, but grant easement rights for public thoroughfare. We must still be able to enforce our trespassing laws to be fair to the citizens whose policies these continue to strip the rights from. Open spaces such as parks, playgrounds, bike paths, riverfronts and recreation sites are deemed by deed restrictions for specific public use. In the public trust from the plan which they were originally developed, these are not spaces accessible to anyone who doesn't have a home for overnight use or temporary shelter without sanitation. Just this week, nearly 500 pounds, let me say that again, 500 pounds of waste was cleaned up off an island off the Owasso Bike Bridge in preparation for the next rainstorm. The latest data shows our nonprofit efforts, state and county and city funded help entitled entities are helping only 15 to 21% of the people that we are counting as houseless. That means that 79 to 85% of those either refuse our humanitarian efforts or by their own mental or drug condition, aren't able to make a choice of their own volition to be helped. The camping standards we develop as humane and compassionate community must direct individuals to services and provide the framework to intercede for those unable to make life-saving, life-altering decisions. It's a threefold approach. We must help those who want help. We must advocate for those who want to try. And for the rest who only want our freebies, abuse our open air for drug use, adhere to zero accountability to the basic tenants of the law and in possession of various articles of stolen property, we must still be able to apply the weight of the justice to wake up them to change or be directed to go somewhere else. Our community is here to help, not facilitate a money pit of daily cleanups or extra enforcement costs that would continue a downward spiral of inhumane conditions that would litter our city if we don't get this toxic charity model off our chest. I urge you to develop guidelines that direct people to the help we've already provided and simply not enable them to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Profit. Hey, sorry, guys. There's no clapping in during public testimony, please. Thank you. Jason Profit.
Jason Profit, Corey Road. Uh, I oppose this removing the, the camping. We need to leave it the way it is. Uh, the city worked so hard to keep this, clean this area up. Let's keep it clean. So manager of Twisted River Saloon came up with six or eight acres out past the call center on Sportsway by Motel Six. If you want to put it in Conestoga Camp, get it out of the, out of the side of the taxpayers. Set your camp up there. I talked to an Uber driver the other day, said, uh, over Eugene, the camp's empty, there's not enough law enforcement to patrol, to patrol the problems. As taxpayers, we don't want to see this stuff down here. You guys did really well over the years. Get it out, get it out in the head of town. Thanks.
Thank you. June Father Gill.
June Father Gill, um, I'm in Ward Four. I do appreciate that in the ordinance, there is the option included for the city manager to designate areas open to camping, or as I like to call it, safe rest areas. Make it more Springfield. I'd like to have this part of the ordinance be that the city manager is directed to do that rather than if she wants to, or if they want to. I suggest that the way to develop this option in a Springfield manner is to first of all, realize that we work best in partnership. We have Team Springfield, that kind of thing. With other public entities to find and establish a safe rest, safe rest area for Springfield unhoused neighbors. I think we are going to have to work with LaMallane. We are going to have to work with some other entities like the county to find a space, but we need to find one. And secondly, we can use funds. I think we should use funds coming from homelessness response. Responses are coming down from the count, from the whatever it is, the state, I guess, the federal, and maybe from other places to fund some positions, a staff position, one or two perhaps, that would specifically be working with homeless people who have background, who know how to work with unhoused people that understand their needs and are willing to help monitor any kind of camping site that we set or a rest area we set up. The police are doing this now. This would take it away. Police wouldn't have to do as much of that kind of work. We'd have people that, and it would be better for them. And finally suggests that in order to have the flexibility to do this, that we take out the, in any city park as part of the ordinance. Because it may be that we need to work with LaMallane to find a space together. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mary Shannon Moore.
Good evening, Mayor Van Gordon and Springfield counselors. I'm Mary Sharon Moore and I reside on Main Street in Ward Four. I've served for nine winters with Egan Warming Centers and including the Springfield Memorial Building. So I wish to address the camping ordinance in three points. First, when people lack shelter and the goods necessary for basic human life, we all suffer partially from the effects of make do camping, but more so from a smash and grab economic system that is rigged against common folk. Second, the ones creating serious havoc are corporations and national brands that extract tax breaks and low wages from our community. I call this greed without guardrails. It is morally wrong for the rich to expect the poor and the towns where they do business to be their primary beneficiaries. Third, I urge Springfield City Council to not only consider the right, but to defend the right of unhoused people in our community to engage safely in the basic activities which sustain a human life, free of the bone rattling, mind boggling, nerve wracking task of continually searching for the next temporary site that satisfies the city's camping ordinance. Enforcing prohibitions is not enough. We need to be defending their humanity, not eroding what remains of it. Thank you for this opportunity to, to share these thoughts and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Ernie Glover. Majeska Green.
Hello, thanks for the opportunity to speak here. My name is Majeska C. Screen and I'm representing the Springfield Church of the Brethren, which is over on Main Street. You may be aware of it that we've worked on housing for years and are glad to have the Shelter Care AFI building on our property and the St. Vinnie's Myrtlewood next door on what used to be our property. We also have, uh, we're glad to have been able to do those projects, but we still definitely have a particular concern for the many who are still without shelter. And so, um, we're glad to be part of the, uh, Springfield Shelter Rights Alliance and, um, I want to second what some other folks from that alliance have said, including June and, and Chris earlier and Mary Sharon. And, um, I realize you're, you're changing the ordinance because of the state law and the court rulings. And I hope that the end result turns out to be as humane and respectful as possible for the most marginalized. Thank you.
Thank you. Philip Rosenberg.
Good evening. Awesome. Public. Now, for 10 to 20 years I was homeless. Oh, why, excuse me.
Could you say?
My name is Philip Robert Rosenberg, 222 West Level Avenue. Eugene, Oregon. Used to be in the wards around here, but I like Springfield.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Being a former homeless person and I know that, hell, you don't want to see me, you don't want to have anything to do with me. Aside out of mind, and it's cool. I got a way to help out that. It's real simple. Large decorative rocks. Put them in places where, and it is quite a few places you can do this. And because who would, who doesn't want to say, I'm sorry, you can't climb back under the rock you came from, but we got one you can climb under to stay safe. It's simple and it works. It's delicate. We can call it the Bedrock Program. You think it's a joke? It's not a joke. It could work. And it would take away all the years of telling people or not telling people because they don't, you don't want to see them. And the people would be okay with it because it's places where they're comfortable with and low maintenance. You don't even have to wash them. But yeah, it's real simple. And good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol.
At the risk of becoming a target, I'm going to admit I moved from Portland to Springfield. And, um, Portland, I wasn't, it wasn't safe to walk around on the city streets anymore. We had kids camp down here in a van that were selling fentanyl for six or seven months and couldn't pick up any of their garbage. The guy up here, I would give water to when I was afraid he had nodded out in the, in the summer heat. I had to call the police when I, he wouldn't respond to my knocking on his window when I thought he'd OD'd. A guy up here that I was trying to get help for came at me with a knife. The guy that I had tried to help that I was afraid had OD'd, then later, within the next couple of days, broke into our car and our house to retaliate against me trying to get him help. I have worked with Multnomah County Homeless Services interviewing many, many people. I ride my bike and walk the streets and take the public transportation and talk to many people that live on the streets, know them by name. I have yet to meet one that wanted to stay in a shelter or have permanent housing. They can be found if they have permanent housing. They don't want to stay in a shelter because you cannot buy and sell drugs in a shelter. There are people that don't want to be found by abusive spouses and they don't want a permanent home. There are many reasons for wanting to camp. If we're going to allow camping, it has to be in designated places with services for people such as garbage pickup and sanitary services. And the laws that are coming down, but do not preclude us from saying if you want to stay in these camps, it's going to take this many hours of community service to be allowed to camp. We do not need to continue to cripple people and believe that they cannot contribute to our communities. They can, they want to believed in, be believed in, and some of them want to contribute and nobody's offering them a way to do that. And I think that that should also be brought to the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Alson.
Uh, good evening. My name is Stephen Alson. I live at 609 Cascade, right across the street from Jesse Maine Park. Uh, I too am a Carper bagger from Portland. I moved down here to take care of my grandson, so I had a good reason to move down here. I'm very concerned about, uh, camp, camping in Jesse Maine Park. There's no public restrooms. Uh, it's a neighborhood park. It's full of children, including my grandson. And I, there's no way they're going to go 24 hours without using the bathroom. So, and I used to drive back and forth through Portland every day to work and I'm very familiar with how bad things are going to get here if you guys let that happen. So I thought I'd throw my two cents in. Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck Scarpelli.
I'll be pretty brief. Um, I only speak from experience.
Could, could you state your name and location for the record?
My full name is Charles Walter Scarpelli. I'm a resident of Springfield. I really think it's folly for you to consider only at this time updating the code for camp sites. Because what goes along with that is so much more than just figuring out what proposed sites will work to house the houseless. What you really need to think about is how you will fund for the next 25 or 40 years. Sanitation, hygiene, bathrooms, and all the mobile services. And when I say mobile services, I mean just that. I mean services that work for the county and the city that are mobile, that have to travel throughout the community to serve the needs of the houseless. Now, you can qualify for federal funds, but that doesn't mean those federal funds will be coming to you each year. You have to sit down, crunch the numbers and figure out how you're going to fund this program that starts, just starts with designated safe camp sites for the next two generations. We won't solve homelessness. It's going to be around. It's going to get medieval. You have to face that fact and stand out from other towns having a program that is sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Sheri B.
Hi, thank you. My name is Sheri B. and I live out in Thurston in Springfield. Okay. I am a retired Realtor, so I have been involved in a lot of the homeless around town. I have volunteered at the mission for several years. The mission is a very good program. It really does work to help the homeless. They go through a program where they have to detox. They have to try to get out their drugs. And they work to become independent and self-sustainable. So, and I think our homeless, in my opinion, want to help. I think they want to help themselves and they want to feel like they're part of a community. But when our community enables them not to have to work, I don't think that helps them with themselves at all. So if you're going to do something like this, I feel the homeless need to be responsible for picking up their trash, for being involved and giving back to the community that is giving to them. I'm in favor of, I wish Springfield would start to reject Measure 110. This is not just a homeless problem. This is a drug and alcohol problem. I haven't heard anything be addressed on that from the city of Springfield. Do you have anything? I'm asking.
We're, we're not going to respond to you in this. We're just going to take public testimony.
A nod that you acknowledge it, a smile that yes, we need to acknowledge it would be great. We want you to be part of our community too. We want to know that you're supporting, supporting us as citizens of this community that try to give back. So in my final closing, I say we help the homeless become citizens and not cater to them. I don't feel I don't feel we should have to hire someone to pick up their trash. Thank you.
Thank you. Stan?
Born and raised out of East Grove, Oregon. Born here in 1947. We helped people. We bought a drink for my dad. We buy a drink for a drunkard if he was red, ready to pass out. But first you take him out to get a meal. Take him and give you, offer him a job. They want jobs. They don't want to be on their own. They don't want to be sleeping out there, most of them. That's good and want to get ahead. But they're not all the same. Your druggies are not the same. And you need to look a little further than just giving, giving, giving. I don't mind giving. Our Lord says to give, but he doesn't say keep giving, giving, giving. He says, teach them to learn to fish. And we need to teach them to work. And the druggies need to get help and not be laying in my front yard or somebody else's front yard with a place down the way where one of our kids can get on the needles and die. This fentanyl problem is here, people. You want fentanyl spread out in this town? Go the way you're going. We'll have more drugs in this town, just like Portland. Thank you.
Stan, could you, Stan? Could you say where you, where you're located now for the record?
Springfield, Oregon.
Perfect. Thank you.
Eight eighty-seven Main Street.
Okay, I'm going to make, I've got one last con, card. Ernie Glover, I saw a couple of people wandering out. No Ernie. All right, Neil, do you have anybody online?
Mayor, it appears we do not have any hands for this item.
Oh, wait. Hang on one second. Do you, do you guys want to make comments? Are, are? Okay, why don't you come forward and we'll sort it out? Because if you've got a card, I think you're in the, maybe in the wrong pile. We'll get this sorted out. We're going to do it on the fly here.
My name is Mary Zephyr. I'm the store manager of Duluth Trading Company in Springfield, Oregon.
And?
And I'm here for the.
For the camping ordinance?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, I appreciate everybody who's donated a lot of time helping camp, you know, people that are homeless and such. But my story is just going to be based on what I go through on a daily basis and my team. We're a giving store. The fires happened. We helped a lot of people with a lot of clothing. We have homeless that we help, gloves, socks, things like that. But every day, there's a challenge. Even today, I had one where I have full-time security in my building for the safety for my staff. Can I say that everybody walking in is, is a homeless camping person? No. But I can see them in the back of my building. I provided some photos where we've had fires repeatedly from campers. You know, we have firemen out there putting it out, hoping that we don't have to evacuate. I've had to bring my staff in bathrooms, waiting with somebody with a knife, a gun, a bat, a golf club, a hammer, and let them know, hey, police are on their way. Springfield Police has been incredible. They've helped us do some more camera work and things so we can prosecute when needed. Property manager, we're calling them all the time. Our trash bins used to be a place to sleep. Now, they had to spend a lot of money just to cage it off. Then we came to work with power being shut off in the building all the time because the campers come down, which shut our power off. Then my property manager had to spend a lot of money just caging that. So the dollar amount, you know, it's great. And then they turn around and cut the locks so they can get in the trash to get cardboard boxes and such to sleep with. And they bring them up on the hill and they sleep there. And then that's where the fires and such happen. So it's, it's difficult to, you know, try to be a complainer when we love Springfield, we're glad we're here, we invite you all in to come shopping. But it, you know, when you have an associate that you lose or they're crying because they're scared to death to go out to their car. And so now we have to go out in packs even during the day to make sure people are safe. Make sure our customers are safe. Cars are getting broken into. People are taking naps in their cars. Employees while we're in the building, that's camping, you know. So I appreciate all your guys' time. Thank you. You have a, a big job to do. This isn't pretty. But I challenge anybody that would like to come in every day and take a look at what we go through. And I provided some photos if you'd like them.
Were they in our packet or do you have, why don't you give them to Neil and he'll hand them out? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Did you have somebody else?
Hi, my name is Patty. I am a property manager in the Gateway area here in Springfield. And I have a decent-sized portfolio that I manage of commercial properties. And the experiences that we have on a daily basis, and they are daily, that's seven days a week. I get calls all the time from all of my tenants. Somebody coming in threatening staff. They can't control them. I mean, a lot of times I'm onsite or I'm near because I have so many properties in that area. A lot of times, thankfully, I can rely on Springfield PD. I have a great relationship with them, and they've been very supportive. The problem is they're very limited on what they can do for us. They help us, they support us, they get us to a safe place, but they, they repeat and they're right back again. I ask on my tenant's behalf, my landlord's behalf, that things get to a better state with this cycle that has happened with this situation. It's not good for any one of my businesses, whether they're large or small. I have people that don't want to go into a business because we have somebody out front sitting literally by the front door. You can't make sense of anything that they're saying, but the elderly person is afraid to go into the business to get a hearing aid. I'm just, I'll use that as an example. It's just out of control. I understand there needs to be a balance, and I appreciate your work for this. But I really feel like it's important for us to tell you how serious it is. This is needles every day. This is feces every day. This is extra expense for the owner of my properties to secure them. I've lost power on a weekend to big, big tenants that I have. And I just say the big tenants just because they got into a, an area where they threw all the main breakers off. It created a large situation. I've had a fire where I've had an evacuation on a business. These are things that are just simply not fair for all of these businesses to experience. And I hope that the council can come to a resolution that it's a better quality for all of the centers that provide business for us to visit a better and safer place to go to. It's very important. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, Mary Bridget. And I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing.
Okay. So, um, we just have some process questions and then questions about the code. So however you want to.
All right. Do people have questions or? Either or, let's take them at this point.
Well, first of all, I, I have read that ordinance very closely. I think you did a very good job writing it up. I think I would, it would be great if several of these folks would actually take the time to read the proposed ordinance and see that it is quite restrictive in a sense that it is as restrictive as it can be, but manageable. The far as the sidewalks, the businesses, all those places are not allowed to be camped on. We, we wrote that in there. It makes sense. We can't just say so much for the state law. We, we're going to disregard it. We can't do it. That being said, the only part that I think that, that in my mind, which may change, but in my mind, that needs some clarification or modification, is the reduction of the fine. Yep, it's on page, page three of three that I see. It's on the draft where it says, the defense of the section is punishable as a violation may include a fine of $25. And I, please remind me, what, what was it?
Was 720, which is the standard for a violation.
Right.
Direction to lower it.
Right.
Um, so obviously it went very low, but just so you could see.
Right. I think it went, I think it went down a little bit fast.
Okay.
Okay. Um, but I also want to look at, I think, I think we have responsibility, and a lot of these folks, I think, understand it and actually mentioned it. And, and even the gentleman from Cottage Grove and then was in Springfield, mentioned it, is that I think we need to look at, okay, how can folks get themselves out of it if they're in trouble? For example, they get cited. How are they, you know, can't squeeze blood out of a turnip? But I think we should give them an opportunity in which if they end up staying for more than 25 hours, get a citation. I'm going to recommend somewhere in the neighborhood of, of a hundred to $150. And then have our court system and look at, and if you would, please look at our, the authorization or the authority this municipal court has in regards to referring a violator to the community service section at the county, CSW, and the sheriff's office administers that in regards to, for example, so many dollars off per eight hours work, per full day's work. All those folks that serve that community service are not just work out there. They get sent to nonprofits that do good work in the community, and they can use their help. But it also allows a person to realize that they can work themselves out of, potentially out of trouble and not get that spiral going as far as failure to pay. Then we got a warrant, then we got the police to get involved. Courts getting involved and it just gets worse. So let's give them an out. And I think that if, if we can look at how we can get them out of the system, then we may not have them come back.
Anybody else? No, general, you can make general comments. You can ask questions. Go ahead, Corey.
Um, first, I would like to thank everyone for coming, and I appreciate the diversity of thought. I appreciate the different perspectives. I'd like to also just take a little time to call out the work that staff has done to do this outreach. I think we've done a really great job of trying to get as much input as we possibly can and all the folks who took time to write and to share their perspectives. Because I think, as a few of you said, this is, this is our communities, and this is our community's challenge, and it's messy and it's complicated. And the more of us that are weighing into it, I think is really useful. So I just wanted to just really call that out and appreciate your work, Mary Bridget, and all the conversations that we have had as a, as a council to try to get to like, how, how do we both meet the requirements of the law? And like Counselor Pictionary said, we, we, we don't get to stay where we are because of the law and because we're trying to make sure that we are in compliance as best as possible and trying to bring our, our, our Springfield perspective to this for folks. And I, I think that it's, it's really helpful to have had people talking about things from a commercial perspective and from a property owner perspective and from someone who was formerly homeless and people who work with the homeless. Because I think it just gets to how complicated and how challenging this is. And to know that as a few of you called out, you know, the expense of it, and, and we talk about this a lot as a council, that, you know, what is our job as a city and what is the job of the county in terms of human services? We are, we are not as a city in, in, in the business, so to speak, of human services. So we do have to work with our partners at the county. And so our, our, our legal, what we have to do legally around this with as much compassion as possible does not mean that we are weighing into starting human services programs. That's where we need to work with our partners at the county to say, hey, y'all are in the business of this. How do we do this? We just have to take care of the, the camping and public pieces and make sure that we keep as many people safe as possible. So that's what I'm just saying. Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I would just like to thank both Counselor Pictionary and broadly for their comments. I think we all know this is a really, really challenging, complicated, difficult conversation. And the solutions aren't short-term. I mean, it's a long-term problem, but we have to, we have to address what we have to address today. So, and I agree, the ordinance is, is written in the best way it can at this moment to, to help solve some of these issues as to, to support our business owners and our residents, and at the same time have some compassion for those that don't have, you know, a home to live in. Um, and Mary Bridge, I agree also, too. I think the fine and just kind of having a, maybe a higher fine, but also the conversation around how they can offset that.
Okay, we can, if it works for you all, if, after people talk about that, we can go, we can revisit the fine and have some discussion there. That's, that's.
Victoria?
Oh, um, thank you. So I was really surprised when I heard people talk because I expected more people that were going to comment about how restrictive this ordinance is. And instead, I heard so many people talking about things that made it sound like we were doing the exact opposite of what the ordinance says. So I would encourage some of those folks that were talking, that made comments like, if you go the way you're going now, if you do something like this, those type of things, take a look at the ordinance, and I think you'll be surprised at, at it. And I, too, we talked about in our last session about the fee. And that was a surprise to me that it had been dropped that much and that there was no discussion around the ability for people to work. Because I agree with many of the people who spoke about people maybe not necessarily wanting to, but getting the opportunity to work because I believe that that's a core, that isn't a punishment. That is giving people an opportunity to do what many of us know gives us pride and gives us self, self-esteem, which is working. And so, yeah, I think that you did a great job on this. I just really want to talk about that, that fee portion. And then what they have, and I really appreciated the businesses who spoke. I mean, I know many of you were telling us, we see it, too. And so I, I appreciated that a lot of the businesses were commenting on the fact that, of what they're dealing with. But not that they don't want to see you. It's that how do we find a balance on this? If you're going to want help, you can't be dumping your stuff in somebody's property and then expect respect back. It has to be a two-way street, and the business owners don't feel like they're getting any type of respect when they have to clean up feces out of their driveways and have to do that. So I think that that's a comment, you know, that's a conversation we need to have. You want the respect from the business owners. You want the compassion, then we need to be shown also that there isn't this disrespect for our community. So.
All right, I'm going to make a couple of comments, and then I'll let Counselor Pictionary jump back in. One of the things I noted down when I, when we worked through this is just to remind and ground people in the fact that the current camping ordinance can't stay. There is a major federal court case. Everybody in the western part of the United States is going through this, as well as our requirement to comply under state law. So we do have to figure out, okay, what do we do in a way that makes sense and prioritizes, you know, in a very Springfield way? And I also want to acknowledge when I work through this, when I hear the poke testimony, right? Homelessness is a problem that's huge, and we're only really talking about a sliver, which is this question about camping that's relatively narrow. So as we sort of talk through this, you know, I, you know, I understand that there's a lot of concerns and questions that wrap around the broader issue of, of homelessness in the community. I do have, you know, there were a couple of business people that stood up or people from a residential area that stood up and just simply talked about what frankly is a crime, right? Like, and regardless of the camping ordinance, regardless of this discussion today, if, you know, people are feeling threatened, if people are feeling attacked, if there's physical assaults or going on, you should call the police. Like, we, it's just the, you know, it's just sort of the reality of it, is that regardless of dealing with this sort of issues related to unhoused, right? Regardless of that person's status, we shouldn't tolerate violent crime in the, in the, in the community. Now, the one thing that I did write down was really what I heard in all the public testimony for, for Springfield was really talking about the importance of public safety, you know, cleanliness of our spaces and getting people help, right? So when I read the ordinance, I know we're going to talk about some of the details together, right? Like, I see the question that we always have about parks, right? Which, this would maintain the camping ban in parks. The question about access to businesses, right? This would maintain, you know, maintain access to businesses. And more importantly, you know, prohibiting in residential areas. Now, I don't know that we're going to get everything the first time, but I want to know that we were sort of taking a solid step, you know, and, and how to go forward. My view is that really, if My view is that really if somebody's using this ordinance, right? Something is right, like that should be a temporary thing until we get them into one of the many channels that happen through Lane County that is about how do you get support services? The things written in a way that is supposed to be, it's nine o'clock tonight. I gotta get through tonight. And then we need to get, you know, get you into a, a channel that's going to get you the behavior helped, addiction helped, economic help, whatever, whatever you may need. So. Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, I was just going to reiterate that I hear the property owners and the business owners loud and clear. And I'm going to reiterate what the marriages said is that that activity that you're describing is criminal. This law, this new law says you can't make homelessness a criminal behavior. It has, that's agreed, but the other behaviors that is affecting property owners or business owners, those are protected and I highly encourage you to call our PD and they will respond and take care of it. The best, you know, don't get in most, you know, unless they're dealing with something higher up the chain. Um, and if they don't respond, then we'd like to hear that. Okay. So it's, it's just a matter of, of, we need to know where our lane is. And if you have property owners, you got, if you're a property owner, you got property rights. I completely support that and I respect that. We have, we have a responsibility to allow somebody if they're not, if they're homeless, but we can tell them and we, we can require or regulate, okay, we don't want you sitting in a place that's not healthy for you. That's not safe for you. We're not going to let them go in along our rivers and our waterways that create a health or environmental hazard because of their behaviors of not using restroom. These different things are, are really we're codifying that really haven't been codified before. So it's, it's nice to get some clarity so we can have a way in which we can react to that.
Right. I think we kind of made our general comments, right? Um, you, do you have other parts that we really need to, to jump into, discuss, give you some direction on?
Yeah, I think the fine amount, I'm getting some consensus about the fine amount. So the direction was to lower it from the 720. Definitely lowered it, but is, it sounds like there may be appetite to hire, to have that be a different amount. And then second part of that would be enforcement of the fine. There might be an avenue through the county. It sounds like to investigate. Um, we could, you could give me a recommendation for the fine amount tonight. We can move forward with the ordinance and then handle the enforcement of the um, fine separately. Do you know that, that could be one path?
Okay. So any, go ahead, Joe.
I'd like to hear from others. I'm, I'm, I think it'd be reasonable to anywhere from 250 down to 150. 25 is way too low. I think we just lose any, any leverage.
And so. All right. Hey, thank you. We're not taking public comment at this time.
And 25 is less than what we charge somebody to hand something out their car window. So yes, true.
Okay. Steve.
We, we looked at the original fine. It was, it would accumulate with people out there, make it very, very very bad for them in the future. And so we recommended going down on the fines. So it could be maybe handled in the future. And so we, we looked at 25, we said that, and I agree with Joe, maybe that's a little bit too low, but I, I would say a hundred, but I wouldn't say over that. And, and see how that works.
Okay. 100.
Yeah, I'm, I'm seeing people nod for this.
Okay. Yeah, we can start there. Yeah.
And I think there is our interest in looking. You, you want to jump in?
Yeah, I think, I think a hundred dollars is too low, but to go from 720 down to 25 and now we're, I mean, a hundred, I would, I'm still stuck on 250, but.
I, I think part of this is, is the ability to offset that fine.
Yeah, which goes into the being able to work it off.
Right. But I, I think the amount.
Yeah.
Kind of factors into that.
Okay. So I think there's definitely consensus about finding an alternative to a financial fine, whatever that may look with the county. Go, go ahead, Joe.
It could be that the amount after your conversation with the community service program may play a role as to where we may land on. They may have a minimum bar, they may have a maximum bar, but I think that's a, a missing piece.
Okay.
So if we can find out what their, what their pay schedule is or what their work off schedule is, whatever it is, then we can maybe have a more informed recommendation.
Okay. I can, um, I'm just thinking here. I can try, I will follow up on that this week and then have a draft ordinance back for you on May 1st. Um, with the adjusted fine amount. If I don't, you know, and depending on what information I find out, does that?
Yeah, it does to me, but we better make, uh, make sure we work in concert with our judge, our, our court to see if they're going to play ball because they're the ones that are going to assess the fine, right? So we need to make sure they're in the same sheet of music.
Okay.
Victoria.
And I'm not inflexible on the price. I'm just saying that the whole point of a fine is to deter behavior. And so it has to be not so much that somebody can't get out from under it, but it also has to, it has to do what it's supposed to do, which is the purpose of it is to deter behavior. Okay.
Okay. So I think we're good on that. The other question was the survey, whether or not we were good, uh, closing it this Friday. Um, so that's the online survey that we have access. I'm looking for head nods. Yep. Close to this Friday.
Thank you. Okay. Um, so then, so I'm clear on the direction. So I will, um, further research to find issue. We'll come back on May 1st for another reading with the adjusted fine amount. Um, that can be, so it wouldn't be on the consent agenda. It would be just a shorter item to address the fine. No public hearing. Does that sound appropriate?
Yes.
Have a public hearing tonight. So there won't be an additional one. And then, um, it would be a technically a first reading on the first, and then you could move forward with adoption on the 15th.
And, and I, and I think with the amount of community interest that's in this, right? Us having, you know, spending a little bit more time having.
Yeah. Talk about it. And then if something pops up in that meantime too, it gives us another chance to really look at it and see.
Right. And I, and I am sure we are still going to continue to get emails, uh, the next couple, uh, couple of weeks.
Yeah. So I'll plan on getting those to you. Uh, so you have those for the next meeting as well.
All right. Great.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
The next item is business from the audience.
Okay. I have three cards for business from the audience. Uh, first card is David Willis. Um, please state your name and location. For the record, and then you have three minutes.
Evening. I'm David Willis, a resident of Springfield. Um, I've worked as a social worker in the Salt Lake City Veterans Hospital acute psychiatric unit. I worked with your acute drug detox, their long-term drug detox, and also alcohol treatment and community housing units. I also conducted two major studies for the state of Utah Department of Social Services. And after completing my master's of social work in child welfare in the San Francisco Bay area. I, I shouldn't say I worked in child welfare in the San Francisco Bay area with some clients in West Oakland, the Tenderloin in San Francisco, Richmond, and even San Quentin prison. I also learned my, earned my license as a marriage, family and child counselor. While in Springfield, the past 20 years, I have been involved in the community in numerous ways. I've tried to support a number of volunteer organizations and including preventing homelessness by paying rent, utilities and providing food and clothing through the generous donations of my church. I also did the same for several homeless families that traveled to the area. We have a child who ran away, was homeless, attempted suicide, and finally was diagnosed age 21 as paranoid schizophrenic. We work closely with the Johnson unit, other professionals and community resources. And not a day goes by that our child doesn't have some suicide ideation and sometimes incapacitated by fears of what others are thinking. Uh, Steve Mo knows my child and can attest to this. My wife has been the main caretaker for the past 16 years with me supporting. We have learned how important it is to have someone to support and encourage your child. We have tried to create a safe environment for our child. We have not had anyone other than close family to our home for dinner in 16 years. Because it's just too traumatic to have other people come in. I doubt any government agency or individuals could have done what we have done. We have received many tender mercies. The most important is that our child did not develop harmful habits such as self-medicating with tobacco, drugs, alcohol, marijuana. Our child watches their diet and exercises and tries to stretch by doing minor shopping. With a lifetime of professional volunteer and personal experience, I'm supportive of the city council reviewing the camping ordinance and offer my services, whatever they may be, wherever you deem it to be of support and to help. It is important that whatever decisions are reached in organizations that are supported. We and they should be working towards these main goals, help people to help themselves, work and personal responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris McAllister.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Chris McAllister. I live in 12th Street, Ward three. I talked a little bit about the ordinance a few, uh, earlier. Now I want to talk about home rule. We're a home rule city. We are a home rule city, which means we have the powers to invest in our people and in our situations to see things that way we need to. From the Home Rule League of Oregon cities, home rule refers to the extent which a city may set policy and manage its own affairs without the need to obtain authority from a state legislature, except where preempted. Voters who reside in home rule cities have the authority to establish their own form of local government and empower that government to self-regulate for the protection of public health, safety and welfare, as well as to license, tax and incur debt. In other words, cities have complete local control, except where expressly or implicitly preempted by state or federal law. We have people here who need to actually be taken care of. Our county is big. We're one of the biggest counties in the state. We're one of the poorest counties in the state per capita. We need to own that our people are our people. We need to build housing for as many people as we have in our freshman class. We need to take as many spots for outside development and count it with local development. We need to consider for our seniors who will be phased out of their homes and can no longer take care of themselves. We have an onus to look for government dollars, federal dollars and bring them home. We lost our trees. We lost our mill rights in, in the nineties. We have not taken accountability back like we used to. And so I implore you as public servants to look at how do we define ourselves and not have us live asking for handouts from our county. We give a certain amount, but we do not give back as much as we take. We do not cover our debts. And so our people who serve here, who grew up here, want to know that when things change, that when things get bad, that our city has their back. And that's why I'm proud of everybody who's ever stood at Egan. Whoever stood for it and helped out with the food pantries. Mr. So, uh, Stare, no longer a city counselor. He made it to over 19 activations. He helped over 40 people. Mr. Mo has helped out with multiple things. Counselor Van Gordon, Counselor Rodley. You guys are part of the process that sees the decision-making, but we don't see the action here at home. And so we need to implore people to not rely so much on county dollars and nonprofits who are paid less than minimum wage to take care of people who are not able to be served in nursing homes because they're neither too complex. And neither too much. We can chase them on $10. We can chase the cannabis dollars until we build it into a cohesive plan. It actually takes into all considerations for all Springfielders, not just the people who can pay to play. Not just the people who would actually be able to deal with a hundred, $200 fine. But actually, let's look at the people who can't remember that they have legs in the morning because their mind is gone. The people who are dropped off at Egan because Alzheimer's can't get you into the nursing home. Those are our people. And so I hope that we own our problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Julie Sonam.
Hi, my name is Julie Sonam and I live at 407 South Fourth Street in Springfield. I was here the last city council meeting, talking about my concern about the garbage. And I just wanted to circle back, um, on that topic. Um, I wrote on my card that I was here for, um, health and wellbeing because I really think, um, everything I want to say and share tonight has to do with everything that's been said tonight already about the concern for the community. Um, I did connect with, uh, somebody at Willamah Lane who offered to, um, give support for a community cleanup once a month, and they were very supportive of the idea. Um, like I said, last time I was here, there's four people that I know of that are cleaning up on a regular basis. The garbage is a major problem. I know it doesn't look like it when you're driving in your car, but I'm a walker and I walk roughly two hours a day, sometimes more. And you really see it when you're on the streets and I, I go different routes and it's a lot. There are needles. I could clean up garbage on the, the whole route and walk the route the next day and it's dirty again the next day. Um, it, it's a major problem. The garbage is a major problem. I'm very concerned about it. I'm, I'm really concerned about the land that is owned by companies. So it's not the city property and it's not, um, Willamah Lane property, but it's, um, I don't know, some, the quarry up by the quarry, rock quarry between where Willamah Lane has the mill race path. And then there's land, there's a massive camp up there. It's on the water. There's so much garbage. It's, it's just really unsettling. Um, then there's the, um, the railroad property. And there's people that build fires and that are camping there and dragging garbage there. And I found out after the last meeting that, um, it was actually cleaned up by, um, uh, um, Santa pack employee on their day off, which really made me feel so grateful. Um, but when you call, when I call, if they're not on public property, there's nothing that can happen. So like somebody was not on public property that had the thing still on their arm and they were passed out and they needed help. So I had to wait for cahoots. Um, so my, my main concern is garbage. I know it seems crazy, but I'm a real estate agent. My background is I'm a registered nurse and I just feel like people do better when they're in an environment that is good, you know, and it just, it really brings down the feeling of the community. And I really love it here. I feel like it's changed. I feel like it just changed very quickly. I've walked ever since I've moved here. I've been here 15 years and it, I've never seen it like this. It is bad. I'm really worried about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Neil, do you have any hands up?
Mayor, I'm not seeing any hands up for this item.
And we will move on to any council response. All right. Um, next item, please.
Next item is business from the city council. Item number one is the council appointment. This is the interim Ward four council interview deliberation and appointment. And Mary Bridget Smith is going to.
Uh, so mayor and council, this is a continuation of your work session item where you had, um, interviews and then some deliberation about filling the vacancy for Ward four. Uh, you can, uh, continue with deliberations or move forward to voting. This is a little bit different voting than you typically can do. Um, in the AIS, we outlined option A, which would be as your name is called. Um, as Neil calls your name, then you can just say the name of the person that you put the vote for. You don't need to do nominations and we don't need a motion.
And, and I want to acknowledge before we open this up for additional discussion, that there was a significant amount of deliberations that happened at the work session. Um, and we went through our top three priorities. So, um, I would imagine that there's not going to be a lot of discussion and that we're just going to go straight to voting. Three amazing candidates. It was obviously a hard choice to make. Does anybody want to make any other comments or would you, are you guys ready for me to call for the vote? Any comments you want to make? Go ahead, Corey.
Um, I think you said three amazing candidates, but I also want to just, uh, uh, thank everyone. I think we had a total of five folks, maybe. Um, who threw their name in the hat and it's, it's no, it's no slight thing to do. And just acknowledge that, you know, these are folks who, all the three that we talked to, Jen and I were willing to step up and serve the city of Springfield. And I know that regardless of who is chosen, these folks will continue to serve the city of Springfield. And we're very fortunate to have people who are willing, um, able and excited to jump in and try to help solve our challenges. So thank you to those of you who jumped in and applied.
All right. Um, I'm going to have Neil call the role. And if you could just say the name that you're, um, go ahead, Neil.
Mayor, do you want me to just mention the names so folks know?
That would be.
Um, there were three candidates, Beth Blackwell, CJ Mann and June Father Gill.
All right. Thank you. Neil, could you call the role, please?
Yes, uh, Counselor Webber.
Beth Blackwell.
Counselor Mo.
Beth Black, Blackwell.
Counselor Rodley.
CJ Mann.
Counselor Doyle.
Beth Blackwell.
Counselor missionary.
Beth Blackwell. Thank you. All right. So I have four votes for Beth, one vote for CJ, and it looks like our Ward four counselor will be Beth Blackwell. Um, Mary Bridgette, can you talk us through the next steps? Because.
So the, um, uh, item tonight was to deliberate and then vote and appoint. The appointment is by a simple majority. The next step is to, um, swear, uh, interim counselor, uh, Blackwell in, um, and we can do that at our next, uh, Um, and we can do that at our next, um, we will coordinate with her specifically, but we could do that at our next meeting on Monday. Um, and then her family can be here and then she'll be, uh, seated.
So, uh, why don't we go ahead and do that next Monday, um, and give you a chance to, you know, take a breath and have a, uh, you know, have some folks here. Um, though I would expect some calls from, uh, the city manager's office tomorrow because they're going to get you a lot of information. A significant amount of information. Um, really, congratulations. Um, and we're looking forward to serving with you. Next item, please.
Any other business from the council?
All right, next item, please.
Uh, next item is business from the city manager. Item number one is the lease review for the Carter Building. Ally Camp is here for the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um, my name is Ally Camp. I'm coming to you from the Economic Development Department in the City Manager's Office. Um, in front of you, we have a lease for the Carter Building site. The developer and construction team for the Blue McKenzie Building coming to downtown has identified a need for what they call laydown space. Um, for the building of the building, this laydown space accommodates equipment, uh, construction materials and vehicles. And this is defined as a quarter block in our downtown core, uh, as seen on the map in your packet. Um, the Carter Building lot is owned by the city of Springfield and it is currently vacant and there's no building on that anymore. Uh, this is a resource available to support the project logistics. Um, and there's a draft lease in your packet. It's a ground lease. Since there is no building on there, it's for a nominal rent of one dollar for the term, which stretches from May twenty twenty-three to September twenty twenty-four, which is identified as the potential realm of construction. Um, there is timeframe language in there to, uh, kind of offer the ability of extension, just in case construction takes a little bit longer. And in case you're wondering, any sort of additions or utilities to the site to accommodate this lease are the responsibility of the leasing.
All right, are there any questions?
Hang on a second, lost my page. I'd like to make a motion to direct the city manager to lease the vacant lot, vacant property at, located at two zero four Fifth Street and, and four two two four five zero A Street, previously known as the Carter Building, but has been demolished and removed to Blue McKenzie Apartments LLC for use as temporary office space and construction stage during construction for the Blue McKenzie site for nominal rent.
Second.
Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
I.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, five yeses, zero noes. Next item, please.
Any other business from the city manager?
Just a small, um, matter. I just wanted to, again, I join with the city councils to congratulate this Blackwell and, um, and thank her for applying for, uh, service to the city. Uh, public service, I think, is one of the highest things that we can do. It's why I chose it as my career. I'm very honored to work with the council that I work with and, um, unfortunately, the mayor was correct. I will be calling you. And you will be getting a lot of information. We will try to make it as manageable as possible. We're very committed, uh, to your success. Thank you.
And, and be aware, you're going to go way up into the next tax bracket.
Yeah.
Just, just kidding.
That is all.
Thank you. Uh, any business from the city attorney?
Oh, I think I've done enough tonight.
All right, thanks, everybody. We are adjourned.